For Protection Agency to order on Thursday, December 21st at 6:30 PM. Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Fire evacuation for everyone who doesn't know is straight out through those double doors in the back or down through these on your right, down the stairs, out to the back door, and please as far away from the building as possible. Secretary, please call the roll.
Louis Fiori.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella is here. Francis Alamo is absent. Joe Muley.
Here.
Kenneth Helensky.
Here.
Vinnie Gorillo is absent. Christian D'Antonio.
Here.
And Nicholas Lefakis is absent.
Thank you. Let the record show there's five regular members that will be seating alternate member D'Antonio tonight in place of one of the regular members, probably Commissioner Alamo, who is not here for the Act for Protection Agency. Entertainer motion for approval of minutes on November 16th, 2023.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing on all those in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye.
The record showed that it was pretty much unanimous. John, do you want to vote on it? Remember, you won't hear your...
I saw the entire meeting.
Okay. Okay. So let the record show is unanimous, six nothing to approve the minutes. Public Communications, are anyone to speak about the Act for Protection? That's something that's not in our agenda, going once, going twice. That's closed. Any correspondence about Act for Protection? Seeing none. New business?
New business is application XARA number 2740 Moody Road, application for an Aquifer registration renewal over the A45 and A50 Aquifer, Town of Enfield applicant owner, map 75, lot 103, I-1 zone.
Thank you. Is the applicant a representative here?
Yes. Bill Duport, DPW, Deputy Director.
Thank you, Bill. Could you just give us a, you know, with Georgie, give us a quick overview of this Act for Application?
So what we're doing is we're looking to, obviously, as you guys know, you've P&amp;Z approved the application for the fuel station renewal and update. What we're looking to do is renew our Aquifer Protection Registration. It actually, I believe it expired in January of this year. It was found out during the process for getting the planning and zoning application together. So I put the application together and we created a best management practices, put that on there, and we renewed all of the information on the previous application and submitted it with the help of Georgie.
Thank you. Georgie, anything you want to add to this?
Sure. So I inspected the site and it was very clean, well organized. There were a couple of recommendations I made about the location of trash vehicles and just some dumpster notes to keep an eye on. And then, so their original registration included activities A, D, V, and X. However, because they're pending the planning and zoning for a site plan modification to remove underground storage tanks and to put in above ground storage tanks, it's a lot better for the environment, and I recommend a condition that activity A be suspended after the completion of the project under XSU 23-01, just to keep them as a safe backup, just in case something goes wrong during the application process. They could always go back to activity A if they need to. But the goal is to hopefully never have to do USTs again. Everything else was in compliance with the regulations and there were no violations.
Thank you. I just have an order of business to do. Commissioner Alamo, I did seek Commissioner D'Antonio for this. Would you like to come in? You also want to sit this one out? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. So Commissioner Alamo is going to sit this one out since he came in a little late, but entertain any questions for the applicant or staff on this?
No.
Nope. Everybody understands where, you know, the approval for this would be with the one condition? Okay. Thank you very much. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to... Is this a public hearing?
No.
No, I don't think so. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion, sir. Motion.
Here's your secretary. Yeah, I'll let you second. That's okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve ARA number 27-40 Moody Road, application for an Aquifer renewal registration over the A45 and A50 Aquifers, Town of Enfield applicant owner, map 75, lot 103, I-1 zone, with the one condition listed.
Which is... Would you mind reading that one, John?
Sure. The condition is activity A is to be suspended after the completion of the project under XSU number 23-01.
Thank you. Motion to approve. Commissioner Muley seconded already. The motion made by the secretary, seconded by Commissioner Muley to approve this. Any discussion? Seeing none, whenever you're ready, Mr. Secretary.
Louis Fiori.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Kenneth Helensky.
Four.
Christian D'Antonio.
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
The record shows unanimous to approve this Act for Protection. You're all sitting, I think you're all sitting now with the project. I think that was probably it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just want to clarify, is it six voting members or seven? Because you also have Commissioner Muley.
One, two, three, four, there's seven voting members.
Okay.
Yeah, yes. Commissioner Muley's here, yes.
Okay. Because you also stated six votes for the minutes as well. So just to correct it, it's seven?
Oh, that should be corrected. Yeah, it was seven, yes. Thank you very much.
Just making sure. Thank you.
Yep, appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm getting confused.
So that's what ended... I just want to thank again staff, especially Georgie, for all the work she's done in the last couple of years on Act for Protection, getting us back up to snuff and up on target. Really nice job from all the staff.
Thank you.
So I think we're up to snuff unless something like this pops up that's, you know, we don't know about at the last minute. But again, thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you.
And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman DeGray, seconded by Vice Chairman Higley to adjourn the Act for Protection Agency. We will be back at 7 o'clock for the planning zoning meeting.
I call this meeting of the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission to order of Thursday, December 21st at 7:00 PM. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Fire evacuation right behind you out through the double doors or to your right down these set of doors, down the stairs and out towards the back. And of course, if anything's going on, please walk away as far as you can from the building. Mr. Secretary, roll call whenever you're ready.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Louis Fiori.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella is here. Francis Alamo.
Here.
Joseph Muley.
Here.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
Huh? What was that? Christian D'Antonio.
Here.
And Nicholas Lefakis is absent.
Thank you. Let the record show that all the regular members are here in attendance except for Mr. Lefakis who couldn't make it tonight. Entertainer motion to approve the minutes of December 7th, the regular meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holinsky. Discussion on the minutes. I had one question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead. No, you first.
I had one. Did you do roll call?
Yeah.
Oh, you did. Okay. Okay. So John wasn't here on time?
John just did roll call.
No, on that meeting.
Oh, that meeting.
You did. Okay. I don't remember. All right. That's why I asked. Okay. Commissioner Alamo.
Yes. There's a section of the agenda that was left off the minutes, Commissioner's correspondence. The whole section of that is not on the minutes. And there's stuff that's after Commissioner's correspondence that are on the minutes.
I know we had somebody else take the minutes, I think, or somebody do it off a recording or so. Through the chair, Lori.
Yeah, unfortunately Rebecca was ill and so that was kind of a last minute thing. So our other recording secretary did do them over the weekend. So we'll have her check it. She's our temporary. So she's in the office. So.
This was stamped into the town clerk. So it needs to be amended.
So the amendment occurs on these next, on tonight's minutes?
Well, I don't know what it was verbatim.
Well, the minutes are not verbatim and never.
It's not verbatim.
Well, it's not even on there. The whole section is not on there.
We'll put something in.
Okay, you can go back to the video. It's still there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would you accept an amendment tonight, Commissioner Alamo stating that there was, give me a second here, correspondence, Commissioner's correspondence of that Commissioner Alamo questioned the resignation letter of Chairman Fiori? Would that satisfy you if we made that amendment tonight?
No, I'd like it verbatim.
We don't do verbatim. We do not do verbatim minutes.
Well, maybe not verbatim, but I'd like to have you go back to the video and at least get some contents out of it. Not that I just simply questioned it.
Then entertain a motion to table the minutes. Unfortunately, I won't be here at the next meeting to approve those minutes since you're unwilling to compromise with me. I'll entertain a motion to table the minutes. Won't be forgotten either.
Second.
Anybody?
Who made the first, please?
Well, the chair made it, but I don't know if the chair can make a motion.
He asked if anybody.
I don't know if the chair.
I made a motion to ask for, is there a motion to second the minutes? Commissioner Alamo made a motion to second the minutes. Is there a second? I mean, table the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeGray. All those in favor willing to table the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There's only two. So the minutes are not tabled. So again, we're going to go back to the discussion on the minutes. I made a recommendation that the, we could amend the minutes tonight stating that Commissioner Alamo questioned some of the things that Chairman Fiori said in his resignation letter, and that would be amended to this minutes. I'll make that motion as the chairman if that's acceptable to the group because we don't do verbatim minutes. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holinsky. All those in favor of amending the minutes as.
Question, questions?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think there was more than just a question. There was a back and forth. So I questioned, you answered. So it should be the contents of the discussion.
We don't do that. If the people want, people want to see the contents, Frank, they go to the video. That's what we do now. Minutes are supposed to be just the actions of the commission. I'm trying to work a compromise with you because people go to the video. If people are really interested about that back and forth you and I had, they can go watch the YouTube video. That's what we've done. That's what we started to do two years ago. That's what the council does. That's what the Board of Ed does. Nobody does verbatim minutes any longer.
Well, it's just ironic how that was left out and it was stuff put in that was, came after. So I mean, it was.
And I'm working with you to try to make sure there's something in here that's agreeable so that if people want to see it, they can go back to and watch the YouTube video.
I'll go with that for now, but not saying I will not take it more forward to.
Well, once we approve the minister, approve, Frank.
I won't vote for it.
Okay, that's fine. I made a motion as a chairman to amend the minutes to state in the correspondence that Commissioner Alamo questioned Chairman Fiori's things in Chairman Fiori's resignation letter. I made that motion. Is there a second? I think Commissioner Holinsky seconded that. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show is.
No.
Yep, there was.
Six to one.
Yeah, one. Are you abstaining, Vinnie, since you weren't here or are you going to vote?
I did.
Okay. One abstention. The minutes are accepted as such. Town attorneys report. I know update, still same one as November 27th. There's no executive session. No enforcement officers report tonight. Public communications. At this point in the meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions related to planning and zoning in Enfield from anyone who is present, provided that no one may discuss any matter of business at this time that is already elsewhere on the agenda, any matter that is part of an open public hearing of this commission, or any matter where a decision of this commission may be pending. That includes any legal pending business. So does anyone like to come in front of the council to speak? Go ahead. Lots is not on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you hear me? No?
Is it on?
It was, it's red. Can you hear?
Pull it forward. Yeah, pull it closer.
Okay. Angela Foss, 16 Crescent Beach Drive. I don't know if I can talk about this. I want to ask you about this. At that last meeting, Impact Residential had some very unkind words to say about us and we couldn't respond to that.
That's up to the next, that's part of the thing.
That's part of the next part. Just wanted to make sure.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Anybody else? For the third time? Seeing on public communications is closed. Moving on to bond release. Mr. Secretary.
Yes. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby approves the release of a landscaping bond in the amount of $5,950 to Eric Forsh. Forsh Construction Company submitted for the project public hearing, 2925 Family Ford 65, Hazard Avenue, site improvements.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holinsky. Discussion on this. The only question I'll attempt, and please, you know, correct me if I'm incorrect here. It looks to me like this is kind of like a swap. It looks like we're releasing the construction company's bond, but Enfield Family Ford is going to turn right around and take back out the bond for the same amount because the work hasn't been done yet. Am I correct with that analysis?
I do believe that is.
Thank you.
The scenario.
So I just want to make that.
It's for $5,950.
$50. Yeah. So I just want to make that point to everyone. The work still isn't done. They're just switching who's holding the bond. So there's been, any other discussion?
What I understand also is that the new bond is currently in place. So.
Okay, it is in place.
Thereby is the release of this one.
Okay. Thank you, John. Commissioner Petronella, thank you for that information. Seeing no
discussion, there's a, motion was made and seconded. Roll call whenever you're ready. Mr. Secretary?
Yes. Louis Fiori.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Francis Alamo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
But the record shows unanimous to release this bond. Moving on to continued public hearings. We don't need to read the whole thing. So I just very quickly, we're going to be reopening hearing PH 3078, application of Impact Residential Development for mixed use development. The applicant in the public hearing is still open. Applicant and representative, please, what I do want to mention for the record, please do not be repetitious tonight. We have heard many comments. If you have something new to add to this public hearing tonight, please come forward. But if you're going to come up and repeat some of the same things that you've said the last two meetings we had where the public hearing is open, please, please don't do that. So we're looking for new information. So having said that, whenever the applicant is ready, I presume you have some new information that you want to pass on to us tonight?
Great.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, there you are.
Chris.
Yeah, Chris, good to see you.
Record Chris Smith on behalf of, well, Chris Smith of Alter &amp; Pearson. I'm a land use attorney with Alter &amp; Pearson. At the outset, I would like to extend my appreciation and thank you to your land use staff as well as Mr. Geiner for arranging for me to participate this evening remotely due to prior commitments that I have that require me to be out of town. And I do apologize to the commission for not being able to attend this evening. But I do appear before you on behalf of the applicant, Impact Residential Development LLC, concerning a proposed mixed use TOD proposal for a 70-unit community where 56 of the 70 units will be income restricted to provide housing opportunities to the residents of the town. At the outset, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission, I'd like to introduce the members of the team who are here this evening or attending remotely. On behalf of Impact Residential, we have Logan Kiwig, Development Manager, who is attending remotely. We have Peter Wood, Development Consultant with Collaborative Development LLC, who is here in person. We also have Frank Vaca, our Licensed Professional Engineer and Project Manager with the BSC Group. Unfortunately, Susan Odell, our Licensed Professional Architect with Paul B. Bailey Architect LLC, is not well this evening, so she's not able to attend. But we do have, from our office as well, Meg Hope, who is Land Use Attorney with Alter &amp; Pearson, Legal Counsel for Impact Residential. Just a quick summary. As you may recall, we commenced the public hearing on November 16th where we made a formal presentation to the commission in public. The hearing was continued to allow Impact Residential the opportunity to address comments that were received at the hearing, and we returned to the commission at your last meeting on December 7th for continuation of the public hearing to address a number of comments, including an alternate architectural design for the buildings, a detailed summary regarding traffic and parking, and a detailed explanation of the stormwater quality and management system. The commission requested that the hearing be continued to this evening to allow members the opportunity to review the supplemental information that was provided and presented on December 7th, and also to confirm that the town engineer had signed off on the proposal, in particular relative to the stormwater management system which has occurred. The town engineer had suggested the elimination of any runoff from the site sheet flow of prior to entering an adjacent property, the two adjacent properties located on Pleasant Street that abut the subject property. Mr. Vaca, the BSC Group incorporated the town engineer's suggestions into the plan. And as the commission is aware, the subject properties currently do not have any stormwater collection or treatment system, any comprehensive system. My client's proposal does provide for a comprehensive stormwater management system where, first, the all stormwater will be collected and treated, B, all stormwater will be discharged after treatment into the adjacent municipal stormwater system whereby no stormwater will sheet flow onto adjacent properties, and C, there will be no increase in peak flows concerning the discharge of this treated stormwater into the municipal system. What we'd like to do at this point, with permission of the chair, is to have Mr. Vaca, our Licensed Professional Engineer of the BSC Group, provide the commission with a brief, brief summary of how he incorporated the town engineer's suggestion into the site plan and stormwater management design whereby we now have a final sign off from the town engineer of the proposal. What you're, Frank, Mr. Vaca will be addressing is that, that small strip of land between the two properties on Pleasant Street and the fact that with the modifications to the plan, they're now going to be impervious surface to allow for all the stormwater that does hit that portion of the property to be collected and not allowed to sheet flow off onto the two adjacent properties on either side of that strip. But again, with the permission of the chair, I'll turn the presentation over to Mr. Vaca. Thank you.
Please do. Yep, please do.
Very good. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
For the record, my name is Francis Vaca. I'm a professional engineer with the BSC Group in Glassbury, Connecticut. I'm going to go through very quickly the changes. So I spoke directly with Mr. Kabibo with regard to the concerns that had been raised at previous meetings. One in particular relates to the small section of property owned by Impact Development adjacent to 20 and 22 Pleasant Street. It was originally, it was previously indicated at previous meetings that this was to be converted to grass to infiltrate any additional water. After further coordination with the town engineer, and it was determined, and it is, I should, to clarify, it is existing pavement right now. It will remain pavement as a result of my coordination with Mr. Kabibo. Therefore, there will not be any infiltration directly adjacent to any of the properties, basements, or anything associated with this area. It will continue to discharge as it currently discharges down the slope onto Pleasant Street, which it has been doing for the duration. The other change that was made is there was concern with regard to one of the focal point detention, one of the focal point water quality systems located in the direction, in the location I am identifying on my, with the computer. This has been removed and replaced by a double catch basin and standard water quality treatment unit where it will discharge directly to Chapel Street. The water quality unit is essentially a structure that will swirl the water around to collect all of the sediments and oils separate. It does not use any planted material. It is essentially just going to, through hydrodynamic means, treat the water and discharge it to Chapel Street. To clarify, this modification to the design ensures that there will no, will be no infiltration associated with any of the stormwater associated with this portion of the property in direct adjacency to 20 Pleasant Street. Those were the two main changes that have, that came as a result of my coordination with the town engineer. And I will clarify, all changes have been in accordance with the Condot Drainage Manual, the 2004 Water Quality Manual, the State of Connecticut, and the 2002 Erosion and Sedimentation Control Guidelines. I will turn the presentation back over to Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I had one, if I may ask one question. So if we can go back to your slide. So it's not, the unfortunate part about this is we're not decreasing impervious coverage. We're going back, which was nice about the original design, even though I do see why you made the change.
The, I would have to, the exact calculation, we have increased a large amount of pervious grass throughout the, throughout the majority of this. But yes, there is a small section here as identified that will remain as impervious. Yes.
Yeah, that's too bad. Okay, but it seems to be probably best solution. Thank you.
And again, Mr. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I just wanted to second that. Yeah, I feel like this is a missed opportunity as well to decrease impervious coverage. And right, and from, from your past presentations, from your analysis, there was to be no runoff to adjacent properties. That's correct. Is that correct?
There was to be no runoff adjacent, but I cannot guarantee that there would not be infiltration.
Right, right. Okay. That's the difference.
Right.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And Commissioner, and that was, that was the concern. That was the, we had comments from the adjacent property owners concerning not only the sheet flow but also possible infiltration into their basement level. So I think the town engineer working with Mr. Vaca, or Mr. Vaca working with the town engineer came up with this solution. It's not what was proposed, but I suppose if you wanted to, you could look at it as an alternative. But the sole purpose was to address that comment from the adjacent property owners on Pleasant.
Yep, totally. So thank you. Go ahead. Commissioner Alamo?
So that change was made after the last meeting and before this meeting?
That is correct. It was in, as a result of there being concern with the town engineer not having fully, for lack of a better term, clicked off his button. I confirmed that with him and I made sure that all of, all comments that he may have had have been addressed. One of the comments that we discussed was his concern with regard to the potential for infiltration as a result of this, which is why we have elected to maintain the existing pavement as is.
Well, I'm glad we waited because I think there was a lot of discussion and we were talking about red buttons and blue buttons and the town engineer had reviewed it. So now he made these changes. So if we went, moved forward last meeting, these changes wouldn't have been made. So I'm glad we waited. Thank you for the change.
Very good.
Continue.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, Chris Smith. Mr. Chairman, just for the record, Chris Smith, that, those were our comments relative to, I know that the hearing was continued to allow the commission the opportunity to review the supplemental information from the last meeting as well as to address the items with the town engineer. So we don't know if the commission or anyone else may have any questions for the team and before we wrap up with our conclusion.
Yes, so what we're going to do, Attorney Smith, is we're going to be, you guys are going to continue what you're going to need to do with them. The public do get a chance to speak again, then you do get a chance to come back and answer any other concerns they have. But I think, I'm looking around, to be quite frank with you, I think it's our, we need to close this public hearing tonight. So we're going to keep on moving. So go ahead, if you want to. Are you done, or you have some more you need to go?
I am also.
Now, unless Mr. Vaca has something further, I think we, that's all we have. We just wanted to explain those two minor modifications for the commission.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Are we going to have an opportunity to ask questions?
Yes, absolutely. Yep, I'm going to open up for the public now, since they're seen to be on hold now until the public speaks. So give them a second to clear, and then we'll open for the public to come back up. Yeah, you'll be coming back, yeah. I'm sure, I'm sure there'll be something you want to respond to. And there might be more questions from the commission. So now it's the public turn. I'm going to remind everyone again, please don't be repetitious to what you've already done. We've already had two public hearings already, so if you have something new to offer or comments, we'll definitely take that into consideration. This commission is very good at reading the minutes and going back and watching the videos, so we've heard all your comments already. So I think, what I have here, it looks like Jonathan Robertson. Yep, come on forward, Jonathan. And you have five minutes for your first time, please, and then three minutes for a second time.
Jonathan, you have to identify yourself.
For the record, your name and your address, please.
Sure.
And make sure the mic's on, and speak clearly right into it.
Can you hear me okay?
Perfect.
Beautiful.
Perfect.
Jonathan Robertson, 14 Pleasant Street. The only question I had was, it looks like there's a right-of-way currently there between where the Lomani Center was deconstructed and the, the old movie theater? And I was wondering, where does that fit into this?
Okay, we don't do a give and take. That's your question.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's the only question.
So a right-of-way near what, Building A?
I'm not sure. It doesn't look to be marked here, but I see.
I notice a right-of-way in between, I'm not going to do a give and take, but I notice a right-of-way between Building A and the corner of that parking lot.
Yes.
The applicant has mentioned that numerous times, there is a right-of-way there.
What's happening to that right-of-way?
Well, we can ask them to come back and explain that. So hang around.
Okay. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I hope you don't mind, I just was helping him a little bit. I think it's Patricia Burns. Patricia, you've been in front of us twice before. Do you have something new you want to add?
Yes.
Okay, please.
Like my grandmother taught me, there are three different ways to go in life.
Name and address.
Yeah, name and address, Patricia, thank you.
To burn 16A Windsor Street.
Yep.
The way that I was going was iffy. I don't want to stab anybody in the back, you know, we're all here for a reason. I'm glad that they're willing to work on the certain things that Mr. Frost needed to be done. My back's off to you. And the other, I'd rather if we can, like I said with them, we can all work together, even for this.
Patricia, you have to address us, not the crowd, please.
If we could all work together for this, not only for people he may know, that could have the same thing that me and my children are looking for, for their future, so that everybody can have it. You know, I was going to do the step toes, but that doesn't pay off in the end, but if we can all work together and come to an agreement for the benefit of the future.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And I think that must be your daughter that wants to speak next? Yep, please, come on up. Your name and address for the record, please.
Gabrielle Burns, 16A Windsor Street.
Yep.
I was thinking, maybe they can add floors to one building, do like six floors and 60 units, so they can subtract the other building for parking. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I don't think we can do that. Jeff Foss?
Jeff Foss, 16 Crescent Beach Drive.
I don't know, please, the staff will pass that out.
Yeah, let them pass that out. We're going to need that. I would like to talk again about the parking in Thompsonville as it relates to the Union Square project. My issue is parking. Do not approve this project as it does not benefit the area as presented. Again, I'm not against the new apartments going in. I said this earlier. I own what I call Marvin Gardens on the game of Boardwalk, and they are building Park Place, which is great. But these are two different price points. This is not my competition at all. Their per-price, unit price is $471,000, given their $33 million project statement. Can you imagine living in a half-million-dollar house with insufficient parking? Okay, so now I want to bring up something that has never been brought up, and I missed it myself. Something that is completely overlooked is that the parking, in the parking numbers as presented, is that the existing public parking lot, which is on Pleasant Street, beside my building at 20 Pleasant Street, is behind, and is behind the town pool, has been given to Impact Residential's project. Why was this never disclosed to the surrounding Impact residents? This creates another shortage of 23 additional parking spots. Yes, I counted them. And more issues with parking when the snow comes. People that are currently using this municipal parking lot during the winter storms will no longer have a place to park to get off the roads. Everyone on that street has been using it for more than 20 years that I'm aware of, and now what? The town already knows we have a major parking issue in Thompsonville, so why is the town just giving away our public parking for this project to go private and create a greater parking problem on the streets? It's not 41 spots they're looking for. Now they need 64 spots because they're taking 23 of our, our municipal parking lot from us for this private use. Where will everyone who has been using this lot park their vehicles in the winter? Was this overlooked? They are taking our current municipal parking area and making it into a private parking area, requiring these 23 parking spots to be added to their numbers. And what about parking spaces needed for their community center? As the Planning and Zoning Commission, you can stop this. As presented, this project does not meet the requirement zoning regulations for parking. I'd like to go over the numbers on a handout. Did everybody get the handout?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So the parking lot I'm talking about is, is right at the top of their project on the left side there, that dark area, it's in yellow here. That parking lot is currently the town's parking lot, and it's for people to park in. So the left side of the handout I gave you, they're looking for 111 parking spots, plus six for the office, and they claim they have 76 on the grounds, which means they need 41 on the street. If you go further down, you'll see where they took the municipal parking lot spot, and actually, this is the different municipal parking lot. This is across from Coronas that they're counting as, as parking. But the problem with that is 12 of the spots across from Coronas is already consumed by the Six family at the end of Coronas. It was given, the town gave the Six family at the end of that parking lot 12 places for them to park, so you have to subtract that out of their original number. That brings them down to 43, and they're only allowed half of that, which brings it to 21. So now they're, they're six parking spots short of what they had estimated they would have. The other thing is, let's see, the other thing is, oh, the fact that they're taking these 23 spots from us means that we need 23 additional spots on the street, or they need 23 more additional spots. So we'll give them credit for only 25 spots on the street. Divided by two means they now only have 12. If you add 21 from Coronas parking lot and 12 on the street, they really only have 33 parking spots, and they tell us they have 51. It doesn't, the math doesn't work. They need 41 parking spots for this to qualify. I just don't get how the math is working here. We don't have the correct math. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Angela Foss?
Angela Foss, 16 Crescent Beach Drive. I want to thank you all for your hard work. I know it's not easy being you. I can't imagine what it would be like being up there and being you guys, and you're doing a great job. The decision tonight, though, is going to be something that's going to be the beginning decisions for everything that happens with this Thompsonville project. I know we're looking forward to a train station. We all want a train station. I know we've been waiting for many, many years for a train station, hasn't happened yet. So we're kind of putting the cart before a horse, and we're planning on something that's going to be two years down the road, maybe more, and do we know the train station will be here for this? They're calling it, you're calling it a, calling it a transit, transit station, or multipurpose buildings, and all of those things don't fit the regs that I have read on multipurpose. I wanted to respond to the planning and zoning meeting last time where these people had spoken. Mr. Wood spoke about us unkindly.
I'm sorry, Mr. who?
Mr. Wood. Mr. Wood. Our genuine desire is to do what is best for our tenants and the residents of Thompsonville. As you know, we are not distanced landlords. We live here in town. We have never spoken to Mr. Wood, so we're quite surprised when he made false statements about us. We actually spoke often with Jessica Mullins, and we have only kind words to say about Jessica Mullins. I will simply state that Impact Residential did try to buy our buildings. They kept wanting to extend the due diligence period for the POS without putting down any typical down payment. They instead put money into an escrow account that they can pull at any time. Any of you who are realtors know that's not how business is done. Our attorney insisted on an escalation clause, so the price went up the longer it took for them to close on our buildings. The town and the Dussetts, they don't have an escalation clause in their contracts. So the price for the town land and the parking lot today remains the same in two years, in three years, for however long it takes for them to purchase the building, and they will continue to extend their contracts, just so you know. When we learned that, that instead of fixing up our apartments, as they had claimed they were going to do, they were going to fix up our apartments, which would not impact our tenants, they instead, we saw them with the plans up here, that they wanted to demolish our buildings and add another building instead. We refused another extension and ended the deal with them. It's that simple. They had to withdraw their contract, or they would have to release money from the escrow account to us, and they claimed that they didn't have it. But we were very content because we were concerned for our tenants, and they were concerned because they were facing housing difficulties or instability. So I want to also say, I know that there's something with the setbacks, minimum rear yard on their paperwork says it's required 20 feet, and they only have two on the front of their document. And I did ask about the setbacks last time, and was told that the setbacks were met. And the other concern I have, and I'm thrilled with the way that the town engineer worked this out for us, is that the snow is, again, being piled up against the buildings. It's pushed up against, in that parking lot, and it'll be piled up there. If they want to have, you know, if they need to deal with snow, push it up against their buildings. Find another location. If they, if you're going to go with this, that snow either has to be removed, like it always does in any other municipality, taken out where it needs to go, or push it up against their own buildings. Don't push it up against ours. That's a lot of snow. Again, I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss you a lot. Thank you for all that you have done for our town. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you. Chris, I think it's Christina Lang?
Hi.
And you were here before, Christine. Did you have something new to offer?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Just wanted to check.
Yes, I heard you a couple of times.
Okay.
Admonishing all of us about being original.
Repetitive.
So yes, I'm original. I'm Chris Lang, and I am at 90 South Road. That's not original. Okay. I'm here just to say that, like we all know, this is the last time you will all be meeting together in this particular commission, and I wish you all well. This is a legacy moment, is what I wanted to say. Should you make Enfield and the TOD in Thompsonville go without another investment for another few decades, or should you have us go without the new housing until somebody comes up with a better bus system, or until a parking garage miraculously appears, or until the cows come home? That isn't, the town constitution have foisted all this on you, that's not your job. Finding parking for everything and fixing the other tenants' problems with parking and everything else is not tonight's job. It's not the job of this developer either. What we have here is a pretty golden opportunity for Thompsonville to start having a magnet that will make, when the train station comes, something worth having. And finally, from the JI on Friday, the 15th of December, my goodness, bringing us back the way it was, Windsor's Founder's Square Housing Retail Project, and I advise you to take a look. Everything they're doing and getting is what we could have had. They got 3.2 million in community investment funding. Now, RTC did not let you have that, but they're going to have a transit-oriented district that works, and that's people-friendly, and gives housing to workforce housing, 20% of it is, and it's even energy efficient, it's Energy Star certified. It's so much like what we could be having if we don't say no. That's what I'm looking at now. Windsor's getting it, and we're not. Don't let that be your legacy. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Is this mine? Yes.
Pat Tibbuto?
Thank you. It's all new. I just, a couple, a couple of addendums to what I said earlier.
Name, Patrick, name and address.
Oh, Patrick Tibbuto, 20 Core Street, Enfield. In, in the discussion that you had, I sensed a tension on the issue of whether you go with commercial or housing first, or a combination thereof. And in a distant life, I was a city hall reporter, an economic development reporter in New Brunswick, Connecticut. I also wrote a history book of the city, which was published, and, but they have an experience down there, and they have an attitude down there which might inform our thinking They lost everything when we were growing. They lost their downtown, they lost their industrial area, and when West Farms Mall was built in '74, so that vacuumed out whatever remaining retail they had. So they were pretty much destroyed, and most of their downtown, a lot of it was just vacant. And so they went on basically a 50-year period to try to rebuild it. They were helped, and they threw everything they could on it. New highways, new parking garages. They went in the public-private partnerships, like leased a third of a new office building, and put the school department in there. They did everything you can think of. They moved the police department downtown and put retail on the first floor. None of these things had what I would consider a transformative effect on their downtown area. It was largely abandoned, and some private investors who built like restaurants and thought that they'd have a go at it, they didn't get business. But what changed? What changed is there's been a number of things. There's a big social change about an attitude about living in downtown areas. People are trying to make better use of mass transit, doing more walking, and things like that. But New Brunswick was also helped by Fast Track, the bus system. If you've ever seen it, the platforms are pretty much like a train. You have a lot of reliability to them, and so that, there's a takeaway from that for us. But anyways, they elected a mayor. She was only in her 20s, Erwin Stewart, a Republican, and her attitude was, one of her attitudes was, she wanted to kind of build a city that young people wanted to live in, so that was her, her thinking. But she was able to also learn from the history of what went on in that city and what worked and what didn't. And the story began, the story, I just want to read one quote from her, but the quote is introduced this way, and the reporter writes, "Some argue a city should create retail opportunities that inspire people to move to town. Others say, starting with building housing, will encourage retail." And this is how she answered that particular And this is how she answered that particular problem. She said, quote, "We learned you build housing first," Stewart said. "It was a risk we took. It's a big risk because we were debating, where do you put your resources? Do you put your resources into retail, or are we putting it into housing? I am so glad we put it into housing because feet on the street is going to drive the economy." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nikki Price.
Good evening. Good evening. Nikki Price, 1324 Enfield Street. I'm going to read something that I wrote to Dr. Poland back in August 21st, 2022. That is going to lead into my comments. "What I find disturbing in the 2021 plan of conservation and development is a focus only on revitalizing Thompsonville. High-rising buildings to accommodate more low-income housing is not the answer when we, as a town, are above the state-of-kinetic goal of 10%. We are currently at 12.5. I think it's a little bit higher now. Before a plan is approved, the fundamental problem of Thompsonville must be addressed and fixed before any plan is put in place. If not, then it will be a waste of money and time." Now, I want to fast-forward to the town council meeting of this past Monday. Resident Jack Sheridan came up and reminded all of us that Shapiro was commissioned four or five decades ago, and it addressed parking. And since then, we've had many more commission reports. And what's the bottom line to Thompsonville's fundamental problem? Parking. How can a town do 40 to 50 years of commission reports and not fix the parking first before any developer comes in and makes a proposal? That's my point. Second, at the last P&amp;Z meeting, our esteemed professionals said this project meets the town's POCD goals. I would like to point out, the POCD is a guideline, as this commission stated at the time of adopting the POCD. Lastly, how does this project move forward when the town council did not accept the grant funds? Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Because I'm going to close the public conference, I'm going to ask if anyone wants to speak who hasn't spoken. Is there anyone who hasn't, didn't sign up that would like to speak about this issue? Please come forward.
A little out of breath, I ran from the parking lot up. I'm not getting any younger. My name is Patrick Talarida. I live at 11 Pearl Street. I live in what used to be the old Thompsonville Firehouse, so I am directly in vicinity of this proposed development. I have certainly been around town long enough to have heard the tales of progress in Thompsonville and the efforts that have been made. Each time, they seem to be stymied where the economy gets in the way, but something always jeopardizes it. And I see, living in Thompsonville now, that we're taking small but steady progress, and I think that we need to continue to do that. I have paid attention, watching this on video, to this progress of what you're deliberating here this evening. And I understand it's not perfect. I understand that there are concerns within the community. I think some of them are legitimate. I think some of them aren't legitimate. But there's concerns, and I think there's a couple of deficiencies that are here, specifically parking. But I think parking is always going to be a deficiency in Thompsonville with every proposed development or any proposed improvement. And I think that's the case in many downtown locations. And sometimes, the progress needs to come before the solutions do. And I think there's opportunity in Thompsonville to improve the parking, but we need development, I think, to spur that on. I think sometimes we sacrifice progress for perfection, and I don't think we're going to get perfection, the first initial steps that we take in Thompsonville. I'm here to speak in favor of this, and I know that this will have an effect on me personally because I live there. I've proposed before this committee and was accepted to do a business in Thompsonville, and the parking that is there that I'm counting on may be jeopardized because of it. But I also am sick of seeing open lots in Thompsonville. I'm also sick of seeing things not progress. We need to take small steps in order to get where we want to be, I think. And I think this commission has an opportunity tonight to do that. It's not everything that we'd want. I would have liked to have seen some retail involved. I certainly would have liked to have seen it as a pure market-condition establishment, but I don't think those are possible under the current economic situations in this community and in Thompsonville itself. And my last comment is, I'm not speaking in favor of this just for Thompsonville. I'm a resident. I was born and raised in Thompsonville. I continue to support it and will fight very hard for it for a long time to come, as long as I have breath, even though I've lost some breath running along. But I think that this helps Enfield in general, because if Thompsonville is lifted up with all the things that are happening, the things that have been, that are moving forward, that this helps lift the rest of Enfield up. Because the less attention Thompsonville takes from either social services or from emergency services, educational services, the better it is for the community as a whole, that the resources can be pushed out throughout the community. So I'm hoping that you'll move this forward and accept this and move the ball forward for the residents of Thompsonville and the residents of Enfield. Thank you very much, and thank you all for your service here. I know you're all volunteers. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Would there anyone like to speak for a second time? Oh, you, no, you haven't, yeah, come on up, please. I forgot her first name. Monroe.
Hi. Sheila Monroe, 3 Stacy Lane. This is a sore subject. Let's think back to a renewal. It wiped out Thompsonville. Any plans of making it a little community village, residents as well as businesses? The direction changed. And what do we have from it? Housing. That's it. Now we're all backtracking, trying to figure out how to revitalize Thompsonville. It's a tough situation. You can't build something on something that hasn't has a foundation, many foundations, the parking, of course. And to get to the parking, you know that a one-bedroom is going to have two people in it. Today's the day and age that they're going to have two cars. So you have to just multiply 2, 4, 6, whatever. There's single-family homes that have a whole family. Everybody moves, they all move in. There's four or five cars with that house. So you can't, it's under, the parking is undervaluated, for sure. So getting back to a renewal, it wiped us out in Thompsonville, taking the bridge down over to the Suffield Bridge. That was, that couldn't, that, see, the thing is, and the reason why I'm bringing this up is, we need a plan. We need a vision. We can't just do this and hope for that. We can't do this and hope for that. Take away this and then expect it to be a beautiful place. We, and I think honestly, that if this didn't get changed and it had residential as well as retail underneath, like most of us all remember Thompsonville was, I don't think there'd be an issue today. Because if you have the retail underneath, they're only open certain hours, hours of the day, so that parking situation is gone. So I honestly don't support this at all, and I don't think it's worth taking the strand. It's worth doing, you know, taking down a lot of the things that we've got, that we don't have anymore. Thompsonville's lost. So this is just going to add more housing, that's it, and more problems for the people who already have housing there. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Would anyone like to come up a second time? Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
I'm...
Name and address again.
16A Windsor Street in Enfield, in the Thompsonville section. I'm not going to repeat what I have said before. I'm going to say, I'm a single parent that has raised three now young adults in Thompsonville, and I am, I would be willing to keep walking to have a place that I can call home for me and my children. And when I go, they have it. And like the gentleman before said, we may never have parking. My son lives in Windsor Locks, there's Windsor Station. There isn't much parking there, but it's a beautiful place, and people walk everywhere. My daughter lives in New Jersey. She sold her car. She works for a kind of a little business and corporate office near Washington, DC. She doesn't need a car. There's a bus, and a lot of times she walks. She's only like three miles away from her job. I'd be willing to do that, and I'm sure a lot of people, like Mr. Frost said, a lot of these buildings are so old, they're falling apart. The building I live in is over 100 years old. How much longer are they going to stay? What happens when they're gone? I mean, they're burning down like there's no tomorrow. How much longer are we going to wait till there's no buildings? Till we look at like the poorest country? We're not. We still have, I work in a daycare, and I won't tell you how many, starting from the very little to older, these people drop their children off, and they have a future looking for. And some of them live in Thompsonville. But they're afraid to step on toes. I'm not. If it's good for me and my family and everybody else, and I'm not looking at just me, and that's why I said we need to all work together, even us work with Mr. Frost, keep going. We need to be a united front.
Thank you.
For the sake of the future.
Thank you. Anyone else for a second time? Seeing them, would the applicant like to come forward? I think there's a couple of questions we have probably for you at this point, based on public's comments, if you don't mind.
I'll wait for everybody to sit down, Mr. Chairman, so it's not, not a distraction, or I'm not a distraction for them, but...
Yeah, I just want to remind the commissioner, too, this is probably the last time if you have questions for the applicant, okay? So if I, I guess I'll start first, I guess. Mr. Robertson mentioned, and I know you guys already talked about before, the right-of-way, so if you could explain that again about that right-of-way, please, with the map. Mr. Robertson, can you see the map?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Again, for the record, Francis Vaca, professional engineer. Mr. Robertson, there is this, the orientation of the drive aisle right here, as I identify with my cursor, is the existing location of a right to access. So in other words, there will be the access to 14 Pleasant Street maintained throughout the duration of the project. The proposed plans that were submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission show, in addition to what is shown here, all of the stages of the project will require that a portion of this maintain open for access throughout the duration of the project and will, and once the project is completed, this again, because this is a right to access, this will be maintained throughout the duration of following the construction of the project.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that explanation. I know you did that once before. I'm glad we got that on the record again. Any other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Raimo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last meeting, we had a discussion about the previous, the original design relative to retail. And I believe, sir, you said you did a study on the retail, and that's what changed the plan? I think it was you, sir, on the left there? On my left, you're right.
My name's Peter Wood. I'm the development consultant to Impact Residential. I did not cite a study. I said the developer, upon selection, looked much more carefully at the neighborhood and the retail opportunities. I believe it was in the first hearing where Susan Odell from Paul Bailey Associates presented information and slides showing how much commercial vacancy there is within a couple of blocks of this development site. It was learning of the extensive vacancy rates which exceed 50% within the immediate area, which discouraged Impact from proceeding with any kind of extensive ground-floor retail. There would be financial obligations to maintain that retail space, and in this current climate, it did not appear to be financially feasible to do.
So just in the vicinity, you said, right? In the vicinity of that building?
Within the immediate area surrounding this site, within probably two and a half to three-block radius.
Okay. And when it did that, what was the rate of vacant office space or available office space?
Frank, do you, can you pull up that slide so we can again cover this? Okay, so...
I can't see it.
What you're seeing is an identification, yeah, so the cursor that Mr. Vaca is moving and scrolling on the orange parcel is the development parcel that we're discussing for Union Square. So that would be the development site, and what's cited is all of the commercial along, I believe that's Pearl Street to the south, identifying where commercial properties are and all of the vacancies in that area. I don't believe that information actually even includes the shopping center behind Pearl Street, which is approximately 50% vacant as well. That was spoken to by the public in a prior, in a prior hearing as well. I think it was the second hearing. So yes, we did attempt to document for you here what it was that we discovered in our own research that discouraged the developer from moving forward with an extensive mixed-use development. What we did instead was to provide office space that the developer themselves can maintain on the site, on the ground floor facing North Main Street, as required by the regulations, beyond the, the commercial or, well, the commercial activity that the regulations require facing North Main Street on the ground floor. The developer further offered to provide a community room and a fitness room in the second building, what we describe as Building B, that faces onto Church Street. So those are additional uses that are not residential in character that we're bringing to the site.
So there's no numbers or percentages of office space to that area that's, whether it's vacant or occupied, relative to office space? You didn't look at that?
Hey, for the record, Chris, I don't think, I don't think we actually did the square footage. I think there's a delay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Peter and Commissioner. I don't think that the analysis included square footage analysis for each one of those buildings, but as you can see from that depiction, and Ms. Odell, our architect, had walked through those various uses where the vacancies, I mean, they're listed there, but we did not provide a, I don't believe the analysis included a square footage analysis, Commissioner.
Right. So what I was, what I'm getting at was, there is a look at vacant or need for office space? Any...
Not specifically. What we looked at was the available commercial space in the community that's going unused.
But you think, so you said that the owner can support the offices? That means he'll, they'll have offices in it? Or when you say support...
Yes, these will be offices for the property manager for the site...
Not to lease to somebody?
Correct.
So there's no, okay, so you're not, so I see, I'm glad we talked about this, because I thought you were going to be renting out office space to somebody who needed to rent an office. So that's not the case.
This will be provided to the onsite property manager, leasing agent, and supportive service provider.
So what I was, what I'm getting at was there is a look at vacant or need for office space?
Not specifically. What we looked at was the available commercial space in the community that's going unused.
But you think, so you said that the owner can support the offices? That means he'll, they'll have offices in it? Or when you say support?
Yes, these will be offices for the property manager for the site.
Not to lease to somebody?
Correct.
So there's no, okay, so you're not, so I see, I'm glad we talked about this, because I thought you were going to be renting out office space to somebody who needed to rent an office. So that's not the case.
This will be provided to the onsite property manager, leasing agent, and supportive service providers. These are third-party providers. We, this is not the developer themselves, but these are uses that will be required by the existing development.
And then you had said that it was financial, that it would be a financial impact or burden to maintain, what'd you say in the beginning, maintain a commercial or retail?
Yes, again, I think this is in the record from prior hearings. I spoke previously about in doing a mixed use development, you have to separate the commercial development from the residential development when you're using public subsidies that come from sources such as CHFA and the Department of Housing. Those uses cannot be combined or used towards any commercial activity per se. So there would have to be a completely separate condoized structure for any, you know, extensive retail use on the site. In this current market, there are, you know, there are few opportunities to create new retail until there's a more robust demand that's created, which is the point of the town taking these steps to provide housing. This is what will generate, you know, feet on the street and foot traffic, which will support the existing retail that's in the community and help generate new retail. It's premature at this moment in time for the town to expect a lot of new retail in Thompsonville.
So just to be clear, the office space will be occupied for the facilitating of the building, the property, the managers?
For uses related directly to the property, correct.
Okay. And the other, retail would have been a financial burden to do?
It would be a risk that the developer did not feel was a legitimate risk to take at this time, correct?
Well, thank you for clearing that up. And one more thing, you and I talked about, I think it was you and I, that little strip of land that's now going to be paved.
It's currently paved.
Right, currently paved. We talked about that, and I think I asked you if you had control of that property, and you said there is a purchase-sale agreement?
Correct.
Okay. What about the other parcels? Do you have control of the other parcels?
The other parcels are all town-owned, and they're under another, a separate agreement with the town, correct.
So at this point, either party can walk away?
It would be according to the agreement itself. There are certain, you know, protections and requirements within that purchase and sale agreement that were negotiated between the town and the developer.
Okay. All right, my questions are answered. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know this whole parking thing has been beat to death, but it is a concern, and being relatively due to this. I took three trips in the area over the course of the last few weeks, at night, when people would be home and parked. And my question is, how did you come up with the number of available parking spaces on these streets that are involved? Because I gotta tell you, I'd go down there at 8:00, 9:00, and 10:00, and I couldn't find a parking space to save my life. So I'm just curious how you come up with available parking when the streets are full at night?
I'm going to refer that to our engineer.
Again, for the record, Francis Vaca, professional engineer. The way the regulations are stipulated, it is available parking spaces as in spaces that are able to be utilized on the street, not specifically ones that are fill, are full or not full. So it is basically the available spaces that are within 500 feet of the subject parcel.
So if I may, if I may add, it's not guaranteed parking, it's available parking?
That is correct. It's not guaranteed parking. It is available spaces within 500 feet. And to be specifically clear with regard to the regulation, it is available 50%, 50% of the available spaces within 500 feet. And that is the specific reason, to your point about the guaranteed, the specific 50% number is specified to ensure that we're not taking all of the spaces.
And if I can, Joe, if I can.
Absolutely.
If you don't mind me helping here. That also come, pretty much comes back to our regulation, is why it's a TOD district. Am I not correct? Because it's a transit-oriented district. Whether we like it or not, whatever Planning and Zoning Commission created that zone, it was to de-emphasize autos. That's what a TOD is all about, to de-emphasize autos. Again, it's the chicken or the egg, but I just wanted to make that point so that you grasp our dilemma.
I appreciate it. Thank you. I mean, I understand that you're working on the regulations and stuff, but I just had to go and look for myself. I just find it hard to believe that there's going to be, even if people have one car, I don't know. I just, you answered my question. Thanks.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Chris Smith for the record with Commissioner Muley, is that it? Hopefully. In response to your question, and I know that the chairman had referenced to it, I think it's important just to remind everybody, because I know this is the third night of public hearing, that not only does the proposal meet your, all of your regulations for the TD5 for this particular development, but it also meets your parking regulations, which you recently adopted for this type of development, a TOD development in the, in the TD5 Zone District, which is where the property is located. In addition to utilizing your regulations and demonstrating compliance with it, and actually, we're only utilizing little over 35% of the parking for off-site, which you can use up to 50% of the total necessary parking. But we actually went so far, the BSC group did a study, a parking study, as we presented that at the last meeting, and that was prepared by a licensed professional civil engineer, expert in, in traffic. And the ITE is something that you do reference in, in your regulations to be utilized when evaluating parking issues. So we did utilize that, which is standard in the industry. And that, the, also the various parking that's available in the area was utilized within that, the neighborhood data. But more importantly, the ITE study, which is based on similar communities throughout the entire country, confirmed that your regulations, compliance with your regulations, will work. And I know that you're, you're looking at on-street parking at this point in time, and you see parking spaces taken. But there is, and Mr. Vaca did perform, BSC group did perform a parking analysis and had that breakdown as to where all the spaces were available. And most of those spaces, I believe, were to the south of the property, and that was done deliberately, not, not taking credit for spaces that were in the north of the property in the more residential area. But I just wanted to point out that the plan as prepared is not only, it does comply with your parking requirements and your zoning regulations, and I think that that was reviewed by your staff, and I believe that they agree that we have complied with it, contrary to what anybody may be saying in opposition. And in addition to that, there was a, you know, neighborhood analysis done based on the ITE study to back up those numbers. So we do meet your parking requirements and your regulations relative to this development that you just recently adopted to accommodate this type of development, as the chair indicated, a TOD development. I would like to also just comment just very briefly that we've heard a number of comments both ways, as far as do you do retail first and then have people move in, or is it the other way around? And I think it's fairly accepted planning practices throughout our country that you really need boots on the ground first. You need residents there, and the residents will bring in, hopefully, the businesses, and revive the businesses in those current locations where you have all those vacancies in the immediate neighborhood. So again, and that, Mr. Wood did address that a little more specifically, but I was hoping to touch upon those two items. And relative to any parking that may, that people in the neighborhood may be utilizing the existing properties for parking, all of that, again, was taken into consideration when the ITE study was done, and this development does comply finally with your regulations. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission, for being able to comment on those items. I do have some questions for Mr. Vaca before we, in our conclusion. I know Mr. Wood would like to address the Commission, but I, and I understand at this point, we're trying to address all of your questions before we do that, but I just wanted to indicate that to the, to the Chair. Thank you.
Can we, can we finish, Mr. Wood, with the questions first? I want to make sure the Commissioners are all set with the questions. I know you guys have some closing comments you probably want to make. I'm looking around, is there any other questions? I had a couple of questions for staff, since, again, this kind of wraps that up too. One of the residents did ask about adding floors. If I'm not mistaken, they're at, they're at the max in our regulations with the, how many floors, or could they go higher?
I think they are at the max, but I don't have the regulations.
I'm pretty sure they're at the max. I just wanted to get that for, because one of the residents did ask that they could go higher and create more parking space, but I think you guys are already at the max from a floor height.
I think it's five floors.
Is it five floors?
The allowable height is 55 feet.
Yep.
Five stories.
So it is five stories, and you guys only went up how many?
Four.
Four.
I think we're at about 44 feet.
So you could have went up one more story on each and condensed the building, which could have created possibly some more parking. Hypothetical.
Well, going up another story obviously adds additional...
Yeah, cost.
Density in units, which generates more parking.
No, I'm not saying increase the units. I'm saying you could have went up, narrowed the building, created more parking, I guess.
And that's, that's the other concern, frankly, with adding retail to the site, is you're adding a lot more parking when you add retail. I mean, for the 1,500 or so square feet that, that we're providing in terms of commercial space on the, the ground floor in Building A, six parking spaces were required. And, you know, the more you add, the more parking is going to be generated, so at any rate.
I have another question for staff. Another resident mentioned a public parking lot on Pleasant Street. As far as I'm concerned, I'm going to look at Commissioner Raimo, because him and I noticed the area pretty well. I don't know if the town ever officially adopted that as a town parking lot, or whether that's just a lot that people have been using and, you know, for years. I don't know of that being an official parking lot.
To the best of my knowledge, I believe it was utilized for the Strand and the La Mania Center.
It was, okay. So the town did adopt that.
So, I mean, it was public parking for those uses.
Okay. I'm not sure if it was.
Mr. Chair, so I think, I think they would have a, you would have a lease or purchase agreement on that piece, parking lot, if it was controlled by the town? That parking lot in question, who controls it?
It's part of the overall site that is owned by the town that was part of this RFP.
Yeah.
It's already included.
Just wasn't sure if it was a real parking lot, or if it was something that was commandeered. Yeah.
I think it might have been, I forget, I'm not going to tell you what it used to be, but...
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant, or do you want them to wrap up here? Commissioner Grillo? Yep, please, yep.
Sorry, I just had a quick question. How many apartments, again, can you break it down for me on this building? How, how you have it broken down into percentages? I know I saw in the paperwork that you had it broken down, apartments were like 20% and park, or housing or whatever, you had it broken down in percentages?
I can, I can cite that for you verbally. Do you want to pull up the slide that gives you the breakdown? There's two studios. It's a total of 70 units. Two are studios, 27 are one bedrooms, and 41 are two-bedroom units.
Okay, so that's all apartments right there? This whole building is basically all apartments, and down at the bottom is for the people who takes care of the apartments.
Yes.
Custodians.
There are some apartments on the ground floor of both buildings, but both buildings also have, you know, quote-unquote, "commercial" or "community" space on the ground floor.
Quick question. You're right, we are, we are trying to build up down there, okay? We are. Here is my concern. When the housing, there's like, we're proposing, there's two types, okay? I'm going to throw South Windsor out real quick. They just did something very familiar to this building. But what they did at the top was they put luxury apartments in. What luxury apartments does is brings in money. When you bring in money, you help the town. You supply the businesses that are already there, the mom and pops, and you bring in the business. If the money's not there to spend, sir, it's not going to grow. This is my issue. We have a lot of, we are over on, on housing. We need luxury housing now to bring in Enfield, because Enfield is gorgeous. We have everything here, okay? Except all the money.
Can I respond?
You bring in the money, and everybody will be happy. That's, that's where I'm going with this.
I, I hear you. I appreciate your comments.
And for me personally, you got a floor you can go up, the people downstairs can rent, put your park in if we can figure this out. I don't know if this is allowed. Under the building, in the building, there's the renters' parking. It's in the building. You walk out of your car, you hit an elevator, you go up to your houses, to luxury apartments. Thank you.
Thank you.
So give me, give me a second here. So seeing, I don't think there's any questions. Why don't you, I know you had something you wanted to finalize here, so let's finalize it, please.
Yes, just in response to Mr. Grillo's comments, 20% of these units are market rate. So there is no cap on rents, or rather, incomes, I should say, on those buildings. No, they are taxed, so. Yeah, 20% of the units are at standard taxes. And let me just say that there are, there are various arguments towards what housing does for downtown and retail areas. I worked in Stamford for 15 years back in the 90s, and, and just before and after. Stamford had a real problem. It's, you know, retail was fleeing the downtown back in the, I think, 70s and 80s. The way Stamford solved that problem was to generate housing in the downtown area, and the commercial and retail bloomed following that. Once you bring the density of residents into a downtown area, you create demand that generates sales. And just one other note, the higher income populations aren't necessarily those that spend the most in local retail areas. In fact, those people who have less resources tend to spend more of their money on local, in local businesses for their needs than people who, you know, have, you know, plenty of money and can go wherever. So I would just offer those two things up to the Commission in considering this.
Stamford's Greenwich area?
No, Stamford's self-downtown.
Right, but that's Stamford itself, that's Greenwich area, right?
Well, Stamford is ordered by Greenwich and Darien, yes, correct. Lower Fairfield County.
Yeah. Do you see where I'm going with this, or?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that.
You all set, Commissioner Grillo? You all set? No, no problem.
I'm going to refer this back to our counsel.
Sure. However you guys want to end it. Go ahead.
Just, just for the record again, Chris Smith of Walter &amp; Pearson. I just had a couple of questions for Mr. Vaca, and, and then I'd like to turn the conclusion over to Mr. Wood, who does have some summary comments or some closing comments for the Commission. And, Mr. Vaca, in your professional opinion, does the proposal comply with and meet the requirements of the regulatory site plan criteria provided in Section 9.10.4, the special permit criteria provided in Section 9.20.2, and the provisions provided in the TD5 Zone District and related provisions of this Commission's zoning regulations?
Yes, it does.
And final question, in your professional opinion, Mr. Vaca, and this includes your firm's traffic engineering, traffic and parking study that was done, will the proposal result in an adverse impact to the public health, safety, and welfare?
No, it will not.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for indulging me with that. I would like to turn it over to, to Mr. Wood, who does have some comments that he would like to provide to the Commission, and then I'll just wrap up with a very, very, very short conclusion. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll provide this to the staff.
While she's doing that, I have to get up and stretch my knee. Thank you. I'll trade you. You take that. You take that, you give me that. Okay. I'll start, Mr. Wood, go ahead.
For the record, my name is Peter Wood, Development Consultant to Impact Residential Development. The acronym is IRD. I'd like to take a few moments to summarize the measures my client has taken to respond to various concerns and comments expressed in regards to the Union Square development over the past 18 months. In our effort to be a responsible developer and partner with the town, we've revised our development plans numerous times and in various ways based on comments received in meetings with members of the Connecticut State Historic Preservation Office, the Enfield Town Council, the Town Administrative Review Team, the ART, and the Planning and Zoning Commission members, and the public. The developer negotiated purchase and sale agreements to acquire three adjacent private properties to expand the development footprint, providing for the addition of a third building facing Pleasant Street. This allowed for an increase in density to 123 units while also triggering a review by the Connecticut State Historic Preservation Office as two of the private buildings to be acquired and subsequently demolished were within the Bigelow Hartford Mills Historic District. The design team researched the historic district and incorporated some of the housing typologies near the site into the new building facades as requested by SHIPPO, leading this state agency to approve the plans and conclude that this was one of the most responsive design collaborations with a private developer in their experience. In subsequent town council meetings this past year during which the council approved resolutions two separate times allowing for the submission of funding requests on behalf of the town and the project to the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development, certain town council members in those meetings expressed concerns about the amount of off-site parking required. The developers subsequently voluntarily reduced the scale of the development by 43%, reducing the unit count from 123 studios, one and two bedroom units, to a total of 70 units in two buildings, removing the proposed third and largest building which would have faced Pleasant Street. This reduced the overall parking requirement by 105 spaces and reduced the off-site parking demand by 62 spaces. It's important to recognize that the parking associated with the current site plan meets and actually exceeds the zone district's parking requirements that were recently adopted by the PCC for this transit-oriented district area. During the first PCC hearing on November 16th, one of the public members referenced the Enfield River Gateway Study and encouraged the commission to take these guidelines into account and encourage the best possible design solutions for Thompsonville. Having already met or exceeded the recommendations contained in the Enfield Plan of Conservation and Development and the Enfield Housing and Housing Needs Assessment, our team reviewed the findings of the River Gateway Study and found that our development meets and is consistent with those recommendations as well. Moreover, IRD, the developer, directed our design team to create a new building design for the exterior facades, creating more curb appeal with additional dormers and articulation of the street-facing facades. While adding cost to the project, the developer agreed to offer this alternative design for the commission's consideration. As further evidence of the strength of the Union Square Development Plan, on December 8th, the Federal Home Loan Bank of Boston approved Impact Residential Development's proposal in conjunction with Citizens Bank, awarding $1.2 million in grants and interest rate subsidies to the development. Impact Residential Development has made a substantial commitment and investment over the past 18 months in reliance on the town's decision to work with IRD and develop this property as a transit-oriented district for the benefit of the town's citizens. Impact Residential Development will be a long-term owner and partner with the town of Enfield in its efforts to revitalize the Thompsonville community. We look forward to that partnership.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Final time, any questions of the applicant or staff? Staff, any comments? Laurie?
We did receive an email from Ronnie Salas this evening, and he owns the corner lot over at 9 North Main Street.
The old, what do I call, TiVo pharmacy?
Yeah, so that's the little corner that's been redeveloped and renovated, and it's beautiful. He's had some drainage issues, he wants to just make sure that during construction that there will be inconsistency of having a swale there so there's no sheet flow. So I just want to put that on the record. He had a couple of comments about some people walking over, but that's, you know, we could work on that during ENS.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for getting that in the record. Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Now, we close the public hearing, it's just discussion among ourselves. Everybody understands? So I'll entertain a motion to close the public.
And again, on behalf of the entire team, Mr. Chairman, and we thank you, the commission and your professional staff, and we look forward to working with the commission in partnership with the town to bring this TOD to Enfield. And again, on behalf of our entire team, we wish you, everyone in the commission, your families, a happy and healthy holiday and New Year. And thank you again for your time in processing this application.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for your professionalism. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion made by Commissioner Holinsky, seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. But the record shows unanimous to close the public hearing. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve. Take your time, Secretary, whenever you're ready. Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, first of all, there is conditions, 27 conditions, and I understand that there is a new condition to be added. I can read that in right now?
If you don't, if it's okay with you, if you're comfortable with that, please.
There's an added condition which would make it 28 conditions total, and the 28th condition would be, actually, it's added to the site-specific conditions, which would read as follows. When the WPC permit approval is sought, additional research may be required to analyze capacity during wet weather events. And with that, I'd like to make a motion.
If I can, that would be Condition 28, but natural at the end of the day, it'd be Condition 11 of the site-specific.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing number 3078, application for a mixed-use development at 20 and 1/2 Pleasant Street, 16 Pleasant Street, 2 Chapel Street, 1 and 5 and 19 and 21 Church Street, 17 North Main Street, inclusive of the front parcel with .1 acres. Impact Residential Development applicant, town of Enfield owner, map 24 with lots 51, 60, 61, 62, and 85. Map 27 with lots 135, 162, 165, TD5 Enfield owner or TD5 zone.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holinsky. Discussion on the motion, and please, even the alternates, everyone's opinions and comments count. So Commissioner DeGray started first.
Well, it's been a long time with this, and I've written down everybody's comments, gone through them, reviewed the meetings, and I realized I had to put my emotions aside. I lived in this town, I have lived in Thompsonville. Some of the places I lived downtown were not great, and if I had a helping hand when I first got married, we probably wouldn't have had to live in some of the places that we did. But this is a way to give a hand up. I have to think about the future, and I appreciate Christian because, Commissioner Dantonio, for some of his insight, because this is going to be your town and your children's town and their children's town. And so that's what I have to think about. And then I thought about, well, the train station's coming, and it should be coming online about the same time as this housing comes to fruition. So there'll be more parking spaces when the train station gets developed. So a lot of these parking issues will actually go away. And also, I've had to park on the street, and I've gotten tickets when I've lived downtown. So, yeah, I understand the parking issues, but I also understand we have to move forward. We have to look to the future, and not everybody's going to have cars. And there's a lot of people I know that don't have cars anymore. They do Ubers, they do Lifts, they do buses, and they do different types of transportation. They have the e-bikes, they do scooters. So I think this is really a fit for the future, and I think we have to consider that. And I think they've addressed all of my concerns, and I think they've addressed all of the town's concerns, so. This isn't going to happen tomorrow, it's going to happen two, three years. So I am in favor of it.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Commissioner, no, Commissioner Dantonio was first, no offense, he has up.
Appreciate the sentiment, Commissioner DeGray. I will just carry on that sentiment and say those are all great points. And Thompsonville is, you know, the center of town, it is our transit-oriented district, and we should continue to enhance it as that. And you're absolutely right, is that, you know, the past has not always been transit-oriented, unfortunately, you know, sad, you know. You know, there is a lot of car dependency, which is why we have all these, you know, parking concerns, because there's the assumption everybody is going to have their own car, every person, every resident, which is not, it's not the case. It's not a definitive. And it's not necessarily the future we want to build for Enfield. We don't want, we don't actually want an abundance of parking that's just going to sit fallow. We want the right amount of parking. This developer is building what they've proven to be the right amount of parking for their development. And then I think we've got a lot of information here to go forward into the future as a town, as a Planning and Zoning Commission, and then working with our staff to, and Town Council, of course, to develop the appropriate parking regulations for Thompsonville, for the rest of town, to address these in the future. We're all used to free parking, that is certainly, you know, something we've been used to for a while. It's not a God-given right. We have a limited amount of space, especially in Thompsonville. And there, I mentioned this before, there's other strategies we can take to parking besides just building excess parking just in case. So going forward, you know, we have a lot of things at our disposal, we have a great staff, well-trained, and they've proven themselves well. They will work with us in improving the way we handle parking. We're not unique across the country. There's lots of, lots of places, much, much bigger cities than ours, that have no parking minimums. It's not even radical anymore. So, but anyway, I digress. I do think this project is good, they suit the requirements. I just want to add one thing regarding the motion, which is the architectural style. We don't have that as a condition, but I know we kind of have the option between the two, so I don't know how we're going to address that. We may want to put that as an additional condition.
That's a good point. Thank you for reminding us of that, yes. Thank you, Christopher. So I guess as we go, I know everyone's probably going to have a comment, so I guess I'll go around and poll. Christopher, did you have a preference to the architectural design?
I had no issue with the first one, but then they did present the second one, and I have to say the second one is a nicer fit.
Second one?
Okay, so I'll ask that question of each person who comments, so we'll take a poll. We can always go back and make that a condition. Actually, Ginny, it was before you, Ken.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ginny.
Were you doing the survey or the?
No, give me your comments, or you can do whatever you want to give me. Yeah, whatever you want to do. We're flexible.
We've heard a lot about parking, and I understand that on paper it meets the criteria. I still have a problem with it. I've lived in town my entire life, and every time you go down to Thompsonville, I'm sorry, but you can't find a place to park. The other thing I had a problem with was when this was first presented, it had mixed use, and we've been pushing Thompsonville for mixed use. And I understand that there's empty retail in the vicinity, but they're old, they haven't been kept up, the owners are not putting back into the building. This would all be new, clean, safe retail, and that's what I would like to see, also two.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Holinsky.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with the Thompsonville area. When we were first married, we lived on Walnut Street, which is right near a lot of the vacant areas, vacant commercial areas as of today. But back then, it was kind of teeming place. I was very impressed by the presentations and the professionalism of IRD. I have to give you my highest compliments. It's one of the best presentations I've heard in this type of line of work. So I have confidence in you as a developer, and I think you've already proven you would do the right thing, and you made the changes requested and went above and beyond, I think. So I'd just like to say that I think that's a real strong reason to be in favor of this. And I am in favor of this development. I think it's going to really help the Thompsonville area. And I agree with the premise that you need boots on the ground before you're going to start developing commercial-type businesses. So I'd just like to make that comment. And I am in favor of the newer facade.
Thank you, Ken. Anybody else have any comments? Commissioner Olmo?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you guys for coming to Thompsonville and giving it a good look. So the first plan that was presented with the mixed use and the retail on the lower levels really, really got the community excited, and especially the people, like some of us up here, that were born and brought up in Thompsonville. And, you know, we call it the gateway, and you mentioned one of the studies, but there's other studies that were done. I think Russell Gibson Van Dolan was the name of one of the studies, one of the companies that did a study 20 years ago or 25 years ago. And again, they referred to that, maybe didn't call it the gateway, but that's going to be the street where we would have the mixed use, we'd have the residential and retail like it was. So I think that first presentation gave a lot of people a lot of hope and to see it come back. I have very mixed feelings because I want to see Thompsonville get redeveloped. We talked about our emotions, but, you know, tonight when I asked the question, I wanted to make sure I had it straight about office versus retail. You said the offices, I imagine you were renting the offices out to whatever small company, small little startup company, or a printer, or whatever, a cigar shop, or whatever, not a cigar shop, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of cigar shop, it's gone. Cigar shop's gone. But, yeah, a small startup, that's what I envisioned. To me, that's still mixed use. But now tonight, you told me the offices are for the company itself, for the, to facilitate the daily operations. That's not mixed use. So I kind of changed my mind tonight. I'm sorry, but I'm not going to support this. I mean, it's almost like, you know, we got shown one thing and everything's I mean, it's almost like if, you know, we got shown one thing and everything switched. I mean, I don't want to say it was misleading, or bait and switch, or I don't want to use those kind of words, but it changed. And now for me tonight, and then you mentioned finances, monarial reasons. Monetarial reasons aren't, aren't acceptable. I mean, that's not our problem. That's the developer's problem. He is not going to have the monarial support, monarial resources to support retail. I mean, that's, to me, that's a, that blows it out the window for me, too. So, again, I appreciate you wanted to do this, and I think if you stuck to the same initial proposal, now you don't have any mixed use, none. So, I'm, I'm not going to support this tonight. Maybe you can come back. I, I wish you do, and come back on something else, but you've got to have the component of the mixed use in there. And I, I think people will come. You know, the mixed use, the people that live upstairs support the downstairs, I mean, that's kind of how it always worked, and then other people would come to the stores. So, I, I think the mixed use piece for me, now that it's not mixed, to me, it's not mixed use at all. Parking, too, is somewhat of an issue for me, but I'm, I'm looking at more what you're presenting, and to what it used to be, to the many studies that have been done over the last 30 years, that targeted that entrance, that main entrance, to be a mixed-use area where people could come in, shop, live, and then the outer areas would be the residential areas. So you mentioned before Pearl Street, North Main Street, that's how both of those streets were. They were mixed use, and then the residential were kind of spider-webed off. There was some mixed use scattered within as well. But, so, again, I really appreciate you looking at Enfield, coming to Thompsonville, we've been waiting a long time, but I'm not going to support this in its current situation for the reasons I've given. Thank you.
Frankie, if it does pass, then I certainly want to have your opinion on what architectural design. If it does get approved, I certainly still want to have your opinion on what architectural design you might have liked.
Number two.
Okay, thank you. Joe, anything you want to say? John?
Number two.
Number two? John, do you have a?
Yeah, the second option.
Okay. No comments?
Yep.
If you have no comments, I guess I, of course, everybody knows I always have comments, So first thing I want to add is, I mean, to me, you know, why do we create the TOD district at all, if we're going to be going this far with this project? And why did a past Planning and Zoning Commission create the TODZ, TOD zone at all, if we weren't going to consider in a positive manner a development such as this? That's the question I have. So my personal opinion is if this goes down tonight, I think you guys in the future ought to go look back, go back and get rid of the TOD, what do you have it for? It's meaningless, why have it? But even though you might be not quite happy with this particular project, that was my concern at the top of my head. And I like what was brought up tonight. Parking will always be a problem in Thompsonville, parking will always be a problem in quasi-urban development, regardless of what the town is. You could talk about a parking garage all you want, and maybe we do need another empty lot found somewhere where the town could create another little municipal park, and I certainly would be an advocate of that. But parking will always be a problem, and you can't, if we're going to keep using parking as an excuse to not go forward, we're never going to go forward with anything in this town. And believe me, I was born and raised there, too, my parents were born and raised there. I grew up there, as a matter of fact, the first two years of my life, I lived on Windsor Street. I remember family members in cold water flats, boiling water on a stove, so I know all about Thompsonville. Matter of fact, I was the aide to a councilman during redevelopment, and I came down here every day and did my inventory for him, how things were progressing. And yet, there were some buildings that got torn down that shouldn't have been, absolutely. There's also buildings that should have been torn down that never were. So it's a mixed bag on that one. Urban renewal ruined Thompsonville. Castle was already ruined before urban renewal. I lived here, was born here, always was. You know, we didn't count on the Brown's building burning down, that hurt, we didn't count on that, did we? Maybe Thompsonville would have been a lot different if the Brown building never burned down. Remember the Brown building? With westernado and stuff in it?
Yes.
All right? We didn't count on the bakery moving out, the old teen center slash grants, you know, that would have been viable, those things happened. And Thompsonville has changed, and we need to change with it. We need to go forward. And I really liked what was brought up tonight about Mayor Stewart and New Britain here, I'm going to give a Republican some kudos, and I don't mind, because basically she's right, what comes first, a chicken or the egg? Right? You build the housing first, and then the economic development occurs. We have the train station coming, right? At this point, I trust the people in the state, what they're saying, the money's been somewhat there, they're going to be going forward that. This project, based on our timeline, is going to be happening concurrently with that, or maybe just a little bit before that, like I think you brought up. So again, we need to have the boots on the ground, you have the boots on the ground, with this many people, now economic development starts occurring. And yet, you know, parking needs to be addressed at this level, maybe the council level, Economic Development Commission, I'm not sure, but they need to be looking at another lot or something, even regardless whether this project comes forward or not. Winter parking is an issue, no doubt about it. But like we were saying before, our regulations don't say guaranteed parking, they say available parking. All right? If you want to make a guaranteed parking, change the regulation to say guaranteed parking. And I guess that's my point, we have to go by the regulations here. And so having said that, I've probably said enough, I am for this development, and I'm for option number two. I did like, even though I did like option number one, didn't bother me, option number one reminded me of that facility just as built in Hartford, on the corner of Main and Park, kind of, but option two is a little bit nicer, so I do like the architecture with option two. So having said that, that's my comments. Seeing none, I guess Mr., oh, thank you. So I would like to, again, I usually don't do this, but I would like to add as a condition, if someone would make condition 29, the architectural design be number, proposal number two, I think that would cover it. Laurie, you think that would cover it? Would someone please make that motion?
So moved.
Motion?
I'll second it.
I'm going to love the laugh, right, everybody, a little bit? Commissioner Holinsky made the motion that the architectural design, the second one in proposal, be the accepted one, seconded by Vice Chairman Higley. All those in favor of that condition? I know, you know, however you vote, so that was condition 29. It was unanimous to add that condition. So seeing that, Mr. Secretary, whenever you're ready.
Lufiari?
Four.
Linda DeGray?
Four.
Virginia Higley?
Against.
Francis Alamo?
Against.
Joseph Muey?
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky?
Four.
And John Petronio is four.
Let the record show that this application has passed and has been accepted, and we will be moving forward with this project. I know this is contentious to a lot of people, but please, I know this is contentious with a lot of people, and a lot of division in the town over this project, but this planning zoning, on a five to two, five to two vote, has affirmed this project, and this, this case is closed. Thank you very much, everybody. Give us a second to get collected, and we'll move on to the next.
I will entertain a quick five-minute recess while the room clears. Motion, motion made by Vice Chairman DeGray, seconded by Vice Chairman Higley, for a five-minute recess, all those in favor?
We're all done.
Alex, we're taking a five-minute recess.
I call this meeting back to order, everybody, please. Mr. Secretary, could you please open the hearing on PH 3080 MA, please?
Mr. Chair, I think this was read in, the legal notice was read in last meeting, I can read it in again?
No, it's okay, maybe we should, because we didn't actually hear it, if you don't mind, we tabled it.
Okay.
Thank you, if you don't mind.
All right.
Can you just read the, after, a continued public hearing?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's ever written on our agenda, whatever.
Okay.
Just so the public kind of knows what it is.
Public hearing, number PH 3080 MA, 17 and 21 Elm Street, map 26, lot 18, application for a zoning map amendment from R33 Zone to BL Zone, Triano Properties LLC, applicant, owner, map 26 lots 28, 29, and 118.
Thank you, is the applicant representative here?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, yes, for the record, my name is Attorney Paul Smith, 27 South Main Street, Windsor Locks. I represent the applicant owner, which is Triano Properties LLC. To my right is Dave Ziyak, the engineer with Hesketh Associates, who did the maps for the zone change. And to my left is Frank Triano, who is a member and representative of Triano Properties What you see, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission on the screen, is the zone change map, as you can see, this property, which has been in the Triano family for about 20 years, I believe, is two pieces that are on Elm Street, and then a rear parcel, which is to the rear of Elm Street. In terms of location, this area basically is on the north, I guess you would call the north side of Elm Street. It's bordered on the east and north by residential, and on the west and the south by property zone BL or BG. So, this property's been in the Triano family for some time. They're looking to initially develop the frontage parcels on Elm Street, and from that carve out a rear access driveway to the property, which is located in the rear. The total parcel that we're looking to rezone is 7.5 acres. I would suggest, as you look at this map, that this is really, and I'm sure you're all familiar with the area, it's a transitional zone, again, where you have a business BL and BG, Business General, abutting the property, and then on the other side, you have a large vacant R33 zone. So, the goal is initially to, as I said, to develop the front parcels for commercial purposes, and then to extend that commercial use into the rear lot. I, I would note topographically, the rear lot is, is fairly challenging, because there's extensive wetlands on that lot. So it's, when you say it's, when we say it's going to be developed, it's, it's, it's a limited, the development is going to be limited back there based on the, the wetlands, which is a fairly substantial portion. We proposed BL because that's obviously a little bit more of a limiting zone, in terms of what's allowed for, for business uses. I think, you know, Frank can speak maybe to his, the long-term vision, but I would think it would be a couple of buildings, single-story, medical use, or some light retail use, something like that, nothing with any significant impact. And so it's, they think now is the opportunity, they own obviously other parcels on that street, that they've successfully, successfully developed for business uses, and they think there's an opportunity here to now move forward with these parcels. I don't know, Frank, if there's anything else you want to add?
David, do you want to go to?
Or Dave?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name's Dave Ziyak, I'm a professional engineer with FA Hesketh. And just to maybe expand just a little bit more what Paul was saying, in particular, the, the idea would be to demolish the two homes that are in, on the two lots along Elm Street, and then integrate that, that development with the bank and the medical center, so it would all be tied together. We have to have limited driveway cuts out onto Elm Street, it's a state road, and the idea would be to integrate the parking there, and the whole look of the facility as one, from the corner all the way down. And then the idea was, well, what do we do with the back parcel? It's a, it's a fairly large parcel, certainly for the neighborhood, but as Paul indicated, it's chopped up with a major wetland, and then, of course, there will be buffer requirements to the surrounding residential uses, just by zoning. So the, the thought was to, it's, it's essentially a strange parcel, it's landlocked, and no one really knows how it got that way, but it is, there's, it has no frontage on any public street. So logically, the best shot to do anything back there will be to get a driveway through the wetland area, it's going to be a difficult application with the Wetlands Commission, and then bring any traffic and access to that back piece through the front piece out to Elm Street. There'll be no other access points to the surrounding neighborhood. And, and that's about it. It's, it's been a piece that we've looked at with the Triannos now for a number of years. And this seems like, you know, we've talked it through, we think this is the most logical thing, is to expand some business use down to this location, and then do our best to integrate that back larger piece through the, the front piece to, back to Elm Street. It certainly has no practical use as like an R33 lot. It certainly has no practical use as like an R 33 lot. It would, it would remain undeveloped.
Frank, did you have anything else? If I may, I had a question, I'm kind of confused, if, if the commission doesn't mind. So are you saying that there's going to be no curb cut onto Elm Street? Or are you still?
No, there'll probably be one more curb cut onto Elm Street, where the two lots are.
Right, so that would remain, then? There'd be at least one curb cut, you're going for the Oster for?
Yeah, and then that would go through up into the back piece.
Yeah, okay. And then another access through to, through to the other medical building and the bank in the back?
The idea is to tie that all together nicely.
Okay. I just was confused about the curb cut on Elm. Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you very much, and first of all, happy holidays to everyone. We, we've had this piece for quite a while, and we've looked at it for options, and we finally came to a conclusion and said that there's, there's actually a limited amount of first-floor access, commercial and residential and everything else. Right now, we're working on commercial and medical uses here. We don't want to pursue the homes that are still there. We find this actually as a, an opportunity to do commercial work, medical work, because we have some interest. People that actually solicit us for our advertisements, there's very few walk-in, first-floor, single-floor access for medical, and we're getting a lot of that inquiry right now. It's very difficult to find a spot in Enfield for the, for the cost, for the access, for the parking, and like David said, a lot of the setback issues are a problem. We've actually have some interest. We wanted to see if we can, see if we can develop something, but this is a little bit of a challenged site. We, we have interest for the front. We would like to find out if there's interest for the back. And to do that, as Paul and David Ball said, it's a really challenged area, because most of the site in the back on that larger parcel is very wet. So the buffer in that side is probably going to end up being 50, 100 feet on those parcels that actually abut Elm Street. The drier or the more raised area is actually in the far side. And to actually do that delineation and do all that research is going to be a challenge. So we, we talked with staff, we tried to find out the easiest way, and we also wanted to be not disingenuous to the commission. We have no intention of doing multi-story. We want to actually have it blend into the community. We have two homes that we've owned for a while, they're both two-story. This would be a one-story, medical, single-floor, on-slab, walk-in, handicap-accessible building. There's very few left in Enfield, there's very few now, and it's hard to actually justify the expense it actually takes for something like that. But we see this as an opportunity, because when we developed the M&amp;T building, which used to be Enfield Federal Savings, I'm, like we did with the previous application, I'm from Enfield too, I'm a lifer. So I rode my bike downtown for Bigelow, and I, and I feel for everything that you said at the previous application, but there still needs to be more investment, and you still need to have people come down that have to spend some money, want to go and solicit all the restaurants and all the other activities that are, are part of this. And we see this type of development as a blend that has to bridge the residential that's actually to the east, and the commercial or the medical professional that's actually to the west. And integrating this right into that type of development, we see as an opportunity, and that's why we wanted to bring it for you. The challenge that we had in working with staff is, you have very few zoning opportunities, because B&amp;L does allow more activity. And we wanted to make sure that we presented this to the commission, but also to the public in the sense that we have no intention in the back to build another Hartford Hospital building in the back with multi-story, the, the parking requirements, the setbacks, and probably the density is going to be very challenged back there. But we really wanted to come forward with a zone change application for the purpose that, we want to make sure that you're interested. You know, we, we really can't go forward if we know we're not interested. We feel very comfortable in the front, that we can integrate a pitched roof, a very shingle style building in the front area, but the idea of actually doing that, we have our, our setback requirements and everything designs out for a nice little building that would actually integrate next to, and be lower than most every house that's in the area. In the back, the challenge is, how much can we actually get for density and actually make it be worthwhile? As Mr. Ziyak said, has been our engineer on this site since we actually built that first building in 2005, that it's a tough area. It's a lot of wetness, there's going to be a lot of setback requirements, and we're going to actually abide by all of it, but to do all of that integration, it's going to be extremely expensive. But we also want to make sure that you're interested in doing that. We want to make sure you're interested in doing the front. We think the front's a very great opportunity to bridge that gap between the residential and where the beginning and the end might be, and we think we have the buffer behind it that actually can be integrated into the neighborhood, and still actually be something that Thompsonville will gain from. But we also wanted to make sure that you knew why we came through with this, to tell you that we're only doing first story, single-story, walk-in, and we're planning on doing the same in the back, even though we're applying for BL. At our ART meeting, we actually talked openly about, that has to be clear. That has to be something there. I thank you again also for not, I guess you can say my illness, I was actually sick two weeks ago. I appreciate the, the opportunity to come this time, because you didn't want to have me there. It would have been bad for everybody if I showed up two weeks ago. But the idea is, I wanted to say it myself, to let you know, our intention is to actually do a very simple style access, where fire code, health access, handicap access is all part of the development, but that's also what our intention is to the rear parcel, before people are worried about having a BL district, where we actually have that need. So openly, knowing I'm a, I'm a repeat applicant, I think that hopefully would say, shed some light on what our intentions are, not only for such a, I think, an access to the front, but also to the rear area that may give you a concern as well. And that's why I wanted to make sure it was clear as to what our intentions are for the future.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that overview. Questions for the applicant? Go ahead, Commissioner Hulinski.
Mr. Triano, could you elaborate on, on some of the commercial uses that might come about there? I know you spoke medical, and I'm happy with medical.
Sure.
The first development has worked out very well, I think, on the corner there.
Thank you.
And, but can you just elaborate, maybe, what, what would the types of commercial businesses would you be considering there?
You know, you know, it's funny you said that. We've had no inquiries for commercial.
Okay.
We've only had inquiries for professional. We've had a lawyer, a lawyer actuance, we had PT groups, we've had medical. I know what it would allow it, but you know, in, in the front, we already have some interest, which would take up a good portion of the building, and it is not, it is medical, it is not commercial. We understand that the BL allows that. And I also dovetail, dovetail that to the back. The BL is going to allow commercial in the back, but it's got to be a very low level, low traffic, very hidden. With the tree line, as you see, with the, with the wetlands on the southern side of that larger parcel, it's going to be hidden. There's nothing there. There's no access on Park Avenue, just because it's fully developed. There's, with, with Mr. Rome on that side, on the west side, there's nothing available for, for anybody seeing that opportunity, so we're never going to get any high retail, which is another reason why we know we're not going to be doing some large development back there. It'll be single-story, but we haven't received any. We, we do have some open space, and we can always solicit, but at the same time, that's not the intention. That's not the expectation either.
Okay, so it's going to be something like, like you said, medical offices, perhaps, maybe an optician, something like that?
Potentially, professional office, maybe an accountant type, or a brokerage, something that simple.
CPA, CPA office, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Have you, did, have you talked or notified the people on Park Avenue of your intent, all those abutters?
We did not. We don't have to, we did not.
I know you have to.
We also wanted to make sure that, you know, we don't have a curb cut there either, so no traffic is going to go on that side, and we'll make sure that we actually abut as far back with that setback requirement of 35 feet. We would probably also want to infill and leave all that vegetation that's up there now, for, for all those people, and same thing on the south side, but the south side, we're not going to be able to touch it, it's too wet.
And I know you'd be reputable, and I know your word is your word, so I've, but I guess I'm concerned, even though you don't have to, and we don't have to, nobody has to notify all those abutters. There's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13 of abutters back there, some of them are multi, multi-family, you and I've noticed.
Most are, yeah.
We noticed very well. I'm sure we do. And I know we don't have to notify them, but here they are. This might be, if any of them are even interested, the only time they know that this application is even coming in front of us, if they're happening to be watching this, or if the JI puts it in the paper, or someone puts it in a batch. So that's, that's one of my concerns. I know you didn't have to notify them.
No, and to answer that question, you know, I, I think the idea is having that delay and having that opportunity with the signs. We left the signs up for the entire time for the public hearing.
Yeah, you did.
You know, we wanted to make sure, and, and we're not here to mislead anybody, but we're also not here to develop any kind of large, high-rise and large traffic.
And I'm not implying you're going to mislead anybody, I hope you know that.
But I, I appreciate what you said, because I think it should be said to the microphone and said to, you know, the openness. We're not there to have it be a, a large invasive type of activity.
Yeah.
And we don't, we don't foresee that, just like when I mentioned to Commissioner Hulinski. You know, that's not what we expect to happen in the first place anyways.
Okay. And if I, yeah, go ahead, Georgie.
I just wanted to mention that we did receive quite a lot of callers about the property who live across the street and behind on Park Ave.
You did?
Yes.
So they were kind of aware that we were having this hearing tonight?
Yep, and none of them had any objections or concerns.
Okay.
Just comments of curiosity.
Thank you for passing that on. Thanks for passing that on, I appreciate that. I don't think anybody in the public here, but I got to do it from the public. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to speak for or against this application? Anyone in the public for the third time? Seeing none, that's done. There's no questions, and no, no real questions? Staff have any more questions or concerns?
Nothing beyond what was written in the memo.
Okay. But I did see in the memo that didn't, you didn't allude to anything in our house, affordable housing plan, as we're supposed to be encouraging affordable housing and not decreasing affordable housing, and this application would be eliminating some affordable housing.
That is correct.
Thank you. Just wanted to get that for the record. Seeing none. Entertainer motion to close the public hearing. Realize, once we do that, then discussion's just among ourselves.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Hig, Vice Chairman DeGray, second by Vice Chairman Higley to close the public hearing. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. To record show, the public hearing is closed. Entertainer motion to approve.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing number 3080 MA, 17 and 21 Elm Street, and MAP 26, Lot 118, zoning map amendment from R 33 to BL, Triano Properties LLC applicant owner, MAP 26, lots 28, 29, and 118.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hulinski. Motion made by Secretary Petronellis, second by Commissioner Hulinski to approve. Discussion. Well, I guess I'm the only one in, you know, has a little bit of object about this, and I know you to be honorable business and honorable family, and your word is your word, and I know you always do what you're set to do, so please don't take my comments as anything detrimental towards your, your operation at all, but just, this area bothers me, to be quite frank with you. I mean, I know you know I know it well. I'm concerned about another commercial curb cut on Elm Street. Elm Street is turning into a disaster, from all the way up from Walgreens, past Walgreens, all the way down to this light here. And to me, I'm not looking to create any more commercial areas, tearing down any more woodlands, or certainly tearing down any more homes for commercial expansion in this town, period. One of the reasons why I'm getting off, because I know that's going to happen. And I don't see there's a need, and I've been hearing in my travels throughout town, most people are saying, my God, another medical facility? How many more chicken places are we going to get? How many more gas stations? How many Dunkin' Donuts? Another medical building? So based on all that, you know, I probably, I know I'm in the minority here, but please don't take it as an offense, it's not. I'm going to be voting against this zone change, because of all the reasons I just stated. And that's, that's my only comment, so having said that, since no one else, Commissioner DeGray.
Just a question. I know that you're, what you're trying to do here, and since there is a curb cut already for the medical building and for the bank, I guess I just don't see the necessity for a third one, you know, because the bank and the, the medical building is all connected, and if this is all merged, I'm using the wrong word, but merged it together, why wouldn't you be able to use that? And, and again, you don't, you're not in front of us with a site plan or anything. This is just a zone, but just a thought, just to put it in the back of your mind. Okay? And somebody we know would say noodle on it, so noodle on that. Thank you.
Good show.
So, being that there's two homes there that have driveways that are curb cuts, so they're there, existing.
They're there, yeah.
So if you combine those two, that makes one.
Yeah, no question with the, yeah, we already closed the public hearing, but yeah.
Amongst ourselves, yeah, so it's already, who else has come down?
It's different than that in the commercial one.
Right, but I mean, there already is.
There are.
Curb cuts.
There are curb cuts, yes, but not commercial.
Right, yep.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Commissioner Hulinski.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make a, a comment, you know, we talked about how we all kind of grew up in Thompsonville and all that, and one of the houses we looked at, when we were looking for our first house, was on Middle Road, and it backed up to a medical facility. At the time, it was the small, Johnson wasn't even there, and so it was a small medical, dental-type facility. And the owner of that house said, best neighbors you could ever have. So they're quiet, there's no parties, you know? So, you know, I kind of think of that, you know, and I'm saying, it's really, I think, an ideal use for that land.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. And as far as the potential, they're not here for us for development, but, you know, they talked about the extensive wetlands there.
Yeah, yeah.
And I went and looked again yesterday. I'm so impressed by the Noble Gas Station and what they did over there with that wetland. They actually moved it and created a public area where you can go walk around ponds, and they got benches, and so there's so many different things they could do. I mean, I don't know if they're going to do that, but I don't think that, you know, we're thinking about wetlands as wetlands, like the Redwood Forest, and we got to protect certain species and stuff like that, but there's, that mobile, not mobile, Noble Gas Station, everybody should go back there and look. Amazing what they did, and that lot, that plot back there, that parcel that they built on, everybody tried to build on it over the years. Nope, it's wet. Nope, it's wet. Nope, it's wet. And they came in and they did something amazing. And hopefully, we can see more of that in this community, because it takes wetlands that aren't used to being used.
Again, I have to be careful if I can. This is not about, be careful for what you wish for, because we might end up being just a one big impervious coverage, where I just see this happening every day.
The thing is, people can actually go enjoy that wetland now, and walk around there.
A lot more traffic, and a lot more dangerous intersection, huh, my friend?
Yeah.
All right, we're, we're deviating. We have a vote. Let's have, we're deviating, let's have a vote. Go ahead, Mr. Secretary.
Uh, what's the argument?
Against.
Linda DeGray.
Four. Four.
Frank DeWey.
Four.
Joseph Newway.
Four.
Matt Hulinski.
Four.
John Petronellis, four.
Approved. Approved, six to one. Yep, good luck with the project.
And thank you very much for your service.
Yep, no problem. Good luck, happy, happy holidays, all of you, safe one.
Good holidays.
Happy holidays.
Six to one, approval.
Could you just place, state the effective date? It's in the motion on your paper.
Effective date.
Like a shadow.
Effective January 1st.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. PH 3081, 27 Pearl Street was withdrawn. It was, the applicant withdrew this application due to the fact that it was with 100 feet of a park, Delaue Park, and thus our T, our Thompsonville regulations for any type of cannabis facility required it to be more than 100 feet. This was not going to be retail, it was strictly a manufacturing that was going to bring some economic development to the town, but it does not fall within the application, and the applicant, I think at this point, decided didn't want to go forward and come in front of the next planning zone, and try to get that changed, they just withdrawn, they're probably looking out of town.
Mr. Chair, was that going to be the Diana's?
Yes, it was. Yep, so they've, they've moved on, withdrawn, probably looking at some other opportunities. Okay, going now to PH 3083, these young ladies waiting, 3083ZA, Mr. Secretary.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at their regular meeting on Thursday, December 21, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers at 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. PH number 3083ZA, application of a zoning regulation amendment to allow the use of veterinarian offices as a separate category in the BL, BLH, and BGH zones in Table 5.20, Possum Vet Care, PLLC, applicant Sarah Dupree Rowe, representative.
Good evening. So I guess you're probably all here, so maybe you all identify yourself for the record, if you don't mind, or at least the person who's going to be doing the speaking.
Yeah, hi, I'm Sarah Dupree Rowe, one of the owners of the practice here.
Courtney Snyder.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm so sorry. 91 Coronado Drive in Newington.
Okay.
Courtney Snyder, 64 Kensington Street, Manchester, Connecticut, one of the owners.
Alexa Suter, 27 St. Martin Circle in Wellington, Connecticut.
Marie Bates, 83 Brookview Drive in Vernon, Connecticut.
Okay, thank you, thank you for coming today. Could you please state, you know, why you're here?
So we are looking to be able to provide additional, very badly needed veterinary care for the town of Enfield. You know, it's a 42, roughly 1,000-person city with only two veterinarians at the moment, both of whom are part-time, which means that the majority of residents are forced to travel well outside of the city to obtain veterinary care for their pets. We all work at various clinics around in the area that we see people in, from, from Enfield. majority of residents are forced to travel well outside of the city to obtain veterinary care for their pets. We all work at various clinics around in the area that we see people in, from, from Enfield seeking care in Manchester, in Bolton, in Stafford, in Farmington, in Bloomfield. I saw one in North Wyndham a few weeks ago. And that's a really far distance for people to have to drive to provide even basic care for their pets. So we, the veterinary profession is being overrun by corporations, and we are a local, we've all, we're all Connecticut residents that are looking to develop a private solution for the city of Enfield and even the surrounding towns that are also underserved for vet care, to be able to get quality personalized care for their pets. And unfortunately, with it currently only being available in the, what is it, the Business General Zone, there's not a lot of those locations that are available that are size appropriate for a small animal veterinary clinic, and so, or a veterinary office. And so that's what we're hoping to, we're not looking to be providing overnight care, or we're looking to provide, you know, basically day outpatient care for patients. And that's why we're looking to create a separate category for veterinary offices that are essentially doing just that. One of the clinics that's, that is still currently open in Enfield, Freshwater, is actually technically in the BL zone, so it would also be bringing them into compliance. You know, they just need, Enfield needs more care for their dogs and cats, so.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, anybody else want to add?
No, I've got it all.
She did a very good job. She did a very good job. Questions for the commission, from the commission. Commissioner Higley.
I noticed that in the separate categories, you list BL historic and BG historic. Do you have plans to open up in the historic district?
We, that was actually a, Commissioner Higley, that, the H stands for Hazardville, not historic.
Oh, okay.
Hazardville.
Yeah. Thank you.
I take back my question. And I'm glad that you're not running a kennel.
No, no.
We do need wonderful vets in this town, but not kennels.
No. And that, and that is specifically what we are not trying to serve. We are truly just looking to provide medical care. So.
Any other questions? Commissioner DeGray, sorry, I can see your hand.
Through the chair to staff. The Hazardville BL and BG, the setbacks are very, very close, 10-foot setbacks in that. And in Hazardville, where there's availability to, where these zones would be, are lots of houses. And now, I'm a dog, I've had dogs. I had a dog that the vet called me and said, please come get your dog. He was that loud. He never barked, never. He was a husky, but he had to go there, he had to stay for a couple hours. And when he came to, his howling was so loud that the neighbors were complaining. That's what I have a concern about in Hazardville. And you're saying there's no overnight, I, I heard that, but there will be times when people will have to leave their animal for a couple of hours. And I have, currently have a neighbor who lets their dog out and bark. And it's annoying. So that is a concern, especially in the Hazardville district, is the closeness of the houses in that area.
On some kennels or veterinarian offices, I haven't really been the one where they keep their dogs outside. So when, when the dogs, because she's absolutely right, I have four dogs, by the way, and they do bark when they're outside. But, so people are just pulling in, basically getting out of car with their dogs, going in your office, you're gonna treat them like regular vet, and then they're gone.
That's correct.
This one dog was inside, and that's how bad he was.
I, I can sympathize. I, I've worked with plenty of huskies. But what I will say is that actually veterinary architecture has come a very long way and, over the years, in trying to control sound and odor. And we are working with a veterinary-specific architectural firm to basically soundproof and maximize odor control and ventilation so that we will be less disruptive to surrounding businesses or homes, specifically for that reason. That is actually one of the modern goals of design in veterinary clinics, especially because we will probably be looking at building out an existing building. You know, we want to make sure that that is top priority, so.
And the two veterinary, the two veterinary hospitals you have in Enfield are in strip malls.
Enfield's not.
Enfield's not, sorry. One is, Freshwater is, directly, directly in a location where we, where they share walls. So while Freshwater is the one that would be brought into compliance with this.
Excuse me, I understand where that vet is. I have had animals go to that vet. But the housing that I'm talking about, because.
Hazardville.
In Hazardville, these houses are very close together, especially in the areas that the, that you're talking about. That one area is strictly strip mall with a lot of medical buildings around. There's not a lot of houses close by, but I don't know if that would be the area that you're specifically talking about, because that one's already grandfathered in.
Um, excuse me, Commissioner DeGray, if I may, I think I can probably shed some light on that. Almost like 70 to 80% of our retail uses are surrounded by subdivisions. The map amendment that you just approved completely surrounded by residential. The other thing is, Hazardville might be small, but it also depends on what they would be building, if anything. Right now, you're just looking at a text amendment for use that separates a less intensive use than a much more intense use, like vet clinics and whatnot. So if you're not comfortable with the Hazardville sections being a site plan review, perhaps maybe considering them as a special permit instead. You can listen to the publics and about the Hazardville locations.
I think I would be more comfortable with that because of the proximity of the houses and the density of.
Understood.
Because I've looked at the maps. I don't know if the rest of the commissioners have those maps, but I have them, and I see how close the houses would be in those areas, so.
Absolutely. So.
Yeah, Scitico Plaza.
Of course. So what you could do instead then is just take out those proposed BLHs, BGHs, and instead of an SPR, you could just make it a SP. That would make the commission more comfortable, and I'm sure the public would appreciate that too in regards to location. I also find the veterinarian architect specifics to be very fascinating, because I'm sure, I'm not too familiar with the veterinarian field, but I'm sure moving forward of all this new technology and development, that any proposed building that a vet utilizing this architecture takes over would utilize those sound and odor-proofing measures. But just something to note.
And we certainly respect your concerns. They are, they are valid, and we are definitely appreciate, we, we do not, are not as familiar with the Hazardville specifics, and we certainly appreciate those considerations.
So if I may, yeah, let me, let me make a shot at this motion to approve. So this is my own mind here, and this maybe helps some other commissioners. So what you're recommending, Georgie, is something like this.
Excuse me.
Okay. So what you're recommending is something like this, if we, if we were to approve, the application of zoning regulation amendment to allow the use of veterinary offices as a separate category in the BL zone in table 5.20. In addition, it would be allowed in the BLH and BH zone, but by special use permit only.
Correct. And it would remain the way it is for business professional by special permit.
Yes, yeah.
So the only site plan review would be the BL zone.
BLH and BGH, not regular.
BLH and BGH.
Right, not BL, not regular BL.
No. Regular BL would be site plan review.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. You got, you got that, John?
Special use permit.
BLH and BGH would be by special use permit only, or, probably don't have to say the word only.
Yeah, and the BP, which is currently allowed and is already a special permit, you don't see too much vets going into the business professional zones, but throughout Enfield and our plazas, we have a lot of split zoned locations, more than we realize sometimes. And one of the strip malls is BG and BL.
Yeah.
So why not just make it both? Plus, it benefits the public of Enfield for traveling distances, and so you have an emergency during the day.
Yep, yep, totally get it. Yep.
Yep.
Special use permit and a BLH.
And BGH.
And BG.
H.
And BL.
Oh, you want to make all three of them?
No, 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 BLH, BGH.
BLH, yeah. BGH.
Just the Hazardville.
Just the Hazardville stuff.
Yes.
Keeps them happy.
Yeah.
Any other questions? So can I do, let me, not, for all you people in the audience, is there anyone out there speak for or against this? One, two, three times, done. Done and done. That's actually the last time I have to do that, by the way.
No.
Any other questions? Any questions here?
Right now, we still have the one in residential area, right, in Oliver Road? Is that like the only one we have?
You have, that's one of the two.
Right. That's still functioning, right?
It is functioning.
It's a residential.
They're down, they're down to one part-time doctor.
I'm not sure if it's farmland. Yeah, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure if it's farmland there, or the zone farm, or zone.
It's zoned industrial when I look at it.
It's zoned industrial, wow.
Yeah, probably is, yeah, thinking back, yeah.
Most, most of our vet places are not conforming, but at least with this text amendment, one of them gets closer to compliance.
Maybe two.
So they're just like a part-time now?
They're, yeah, they used to have three doctors. They're down to one part-time doctor over there.
No wonder why my phone doesn't ring as much, because my phone number's very close to theirs. My dog's sick, and I have your wrong number.
All right, staff have any more questions, concerns?
Nope. It's pretty straightforward.
Entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
That's good.
Motion made by Commissioner, Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Commissioner Holinsky to close this public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. It was unanimous to close the public hearing. Mr. Secretary, whenever you're ready to make a motion to approve.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing number 3083ZA, application of a zoning regulation amendment to allow the use of veterinarian, veterinarian offices as a separate category in BL zone and by special use permit in the BLH and BGH zones in table 5.20 Possum Vet Care, PLLC applicant Sarah Dupree Rowe, representative, subject to the certain criteria limitations and application procedures.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chairman Higley. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Secretary, whenever you're ready for the roll.
Yeah, Lou Fiore.
Approve, yes.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Francis Alimo.
Four.
Joseph Mulley.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
And John Petronella's four.
The record shows unanimous approval for this use change, and we're all set, and.
Good luck, congratulations.
Effective date, January 1st.
Effective, could we do effective tomorrow?
If you wanted to.
They, they, they are waiting. So I would say effective.
January 1, it says.
Oh, okay, all right, January.
You could do any date, but.
Does it have to be January 1? No, they, they need to move. I would say effective January 20, December 23, 2024.
23?
2023, excuse me. All those in favor of that, just to make, so the effective date is tomorrow.
Wait, the 23? Wait, Commissioner?
Actually, tomorrow's the 22nd.
Tomorrow is the 22nd.
Yes.
All right, so it's the next day.
Okay.
Give staff a chance to do all the paperwork.
So the 23rd, okay. Thank you.
They've been on hold for like two months.
Did you find one?
So where, where are you going?
I go Plaza.
Oh, yes. I said Scitico Plaza.
That's a good location, very close to Summers as well. It's a great location.
I've been working with this applicant for about six months now. Yes.
So we all set on Saturday? If staff, if staff's okay.
Yeah. I put their zoning permit on hold.
Good luck, ladies.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good luck.
Merry Christmas.
Good luck.
We love you guys. You see, I spent a little time with that first round.
On one condition, you gotta serve my cats.
You did well, you did very well.
Yes. Oh, my God.
All right. There's no old, wait for staff here, hold on. Wait for staff. There's no old business, there's no new business. Other business is staying on, just as a filler for, you know, for staff to get back with the new commission. Is there any correspondence? Any commissioners' correspondence? Commissioner Mulley.
I just want to wish everybody happy holiday, Merry Christmas, and I'm very sad to see you go, sir.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
That's it.
Appreciate it. Anybody else? Commissioner Holinsky.
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge the fact that we're gonna be losing three commissioners at the end of the year here, including our chairman, Mr. Commissioner Fiore. Commissioner Fiore, thank you for your service here as chairman of this august body. And I think you've done an excellent job over the last couple of years. I'd also like to acknowledge Ginny Higley, who I've known for many years. And she's done a great job, and we're gonna miss her experience on this planning and zoning commission. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to acknowledge Nick Lefakis. I didn't know Mr. Lefakis before becoming a commissioner, but I appreciated his insight and his professionalism, and I thank him as well, if he's listening. I wish him a lot of good luck as well.
Thank you. So I'd like to go next, and if I don't mind, I'd like to go next. And Alex, I'd like you to follow the camera to each person I call out instead of me. You can take the camera off me if you don't mind. So I know Commissioner Lefakis is not here tonight, and I want to thank him. I know he's probably gonna watch. Two years ago, when our party won majority, I contacted Mr. Lefakis about whether he wanted to come on to planning zoning. Mr. Lefakis, 20 years of experience of sitting on this board, articulate, intelligent, professional, lot of experience. He sat on here as a full-time member, and after I talked with him, he, he said he would come on as an alternate to help us. And I want to thank him very much. I wish he was here tonight. I enjoy serving with him. I really do. I was on the council, and I know Kenny too, he was part of planning zoning back then, so we were well aware of him. Thank you, Nick, wherever you are. Commissioner D'Antonio, we didn't, I didn't know you from a holding wall until you sat here. You have shown us an aptitude for these regulations. You, you bring a whole different generation to this commission that we didn't have before. And I know you're gonna have a fine future as a commissioner, even if it's not, if you go onto a different board. And I want to thank you. I got to know you well during the last two years, you've done a great job, and I know you're gonna continue to grow and do a great job with the next commission. So I want to thank you. Commissioner Holinsky, you and I go way back, and people might not know this, but Ken was on the Board of Ed when I was on the council, and then Ken became chairman of the Board of Ed when I was deputy mayor. We worked hand in hand. And then when I had to resign from the council for health reasons, the first person I reached to, would he be interested in taking my place, was Mr. Holinsky. He went on to be deputy mayor. Ken and I go way back, and when Tony unfortunately passed away, Ken and I met at Tony's wake, and I, we indicated him a willingness to come on this board. And Ken, I want to thank you. It was wonderful working with you. Again, your professionalism, again, your knowledge has been well, well received, and I couldn't have done it without you. Thank you. Mr. Petronella, thank you. I didn't know you. I knew your family, but I didn't really know you. We got to know each other well, I think, work well together. I want to thank you again for, you know, volunteering to be the secretary. When Tony passed, you've done a tremendous job the last two years doing that, and I miss working with you. I know you're gonna, you'll do fine with the next commission too, and it's been, you know, wonderful working with you. Ginny, you and I do a lot of other things outside of this too. I want to thank you. Your support as, as vice chair has been tremendous to me. You know, people don't know, like, I do, the only person I talk to is Ginny. We go through the agenda, you know, before the meeting, just in case something happens to me, so she can fill in. Her support and her knowledge has been tremendous, and I thank you for working with me the last two years. And I'm sorry you didn't get reappointed.
Oh, thank you.
Linda, I, you know, I know our paths are crossed before, not at this level, but you've been wonderful to work with. I know at times, our views are different because we come from two different political parties. And I know this is not supposed to be political commission, but, you know, that's why you're in parties. But you've been great to work with. Your knowledge and having you as the other vice chair, filling in as secretary, has been very thankful. I really enjoyed working with you. So thank you very much, and I, I know you're gonna do well. Frank, people probably not know this, and I don't mind sharing this, our families go back probably over 1,000 years. Yeah, right?
Oh, yeah.
Probably longer. Matter of fact, my uncle was one of your brother's godfathers.
Yes.
And we, I'm, I'm older than you, but I remember you when you were a little guy. I grew up with your brothers more than you, Frank. But I enjoy, we sparred, and that's fine. Good sparring is a good thing.
It is.
It's a good thing.
As long as you can be respectful and friendship after and shake hands.
Shake hands and say.
That's the problem with the world today.
And if we say something wrong, at least apologize afterwards.
Right, that's the way it should be.
What I want to add is, no one probably watched your back more than I did. And I want you to know that.
Thank you.
And I know you're gonna do well going forward.
Thank you.
Joe, it was really nice, you know, sitting the last two, three months with you. We're not gonna get a chance to sit more, but I know you're gonna do well. You've shown me some, I know you're gonna do well in the next commission. You seem to have an aptitude for it and an. You seem to have an aptitude for it and an understanding, and, you know, you know, good luck going forward, and thank you for the last couple of months.
In the short time, I've actually learned quite a bit, and I've watched over the years, it's, it's been an honor.
Yeah, it's, it's going, and you're going to learn more. You're going to learn a lot more, there's a lot more to learn.
Yeah.
Vinny, Vinny, you know, and I, I do have something to say, you know, basically, I wish you hadn't stopped coming. Um, I did reach out to you numerous ti- times. I do want to mention, this is not personally against you, but I have to mention something because Councilman Nelson brought up this at the council meeting, which is totally, from my standpoint, erroneous, has nothing to do with you personally, so I don't want you to take this as a personal comment towards you, but Councilman Nelson indicated on the council on TV that you stopped coming because I stopped you from sitting on the Fleish and Sisters application, and that is erroneous. You did the right thing by recusing yourself from that application. That was also the advice from our town, uh, legal staff, our town attorney, and from staff, and the applicant themselves asked you to recuse. It wasn't this chairman, I did agree with them, I thought it was in the best interest of this commission for the integrity of all of us, because I'm really important about the integrity of each one of our commissioners. You did do the right thing, you did recuse yourself, and I want to thank you for that. And I want to thank staff. Um, you know, I don't know if you know how, no, I'm not going to, I never cry.
Don't cry.
I never cry. Um, we do work closely together. Um, I do want, I think some of you guys really know that, we have worked closely together the last two years, because I'm in here. So you've had that advantage of having your chairman in, in the building, where we've been able to, and I've been able to dissect some things and with the agenda and things coming up.[1640.25]